Stephanie, are we ready? Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting. As well as a reminder, please shut off all your electronic devices. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'll just wait for the chatter. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes, there are. Added delegation request, Viv Saunders, respecting item 8.8, report FCS 18005, respecting the tax assistance programs for seniors and low-income persons with disabilities. This would be for the January 17 GIC today. As well, added discussion item, item 8.15, Hamilton Future Fund Board of Governors' Report, 17002, from November 29, 2017. Added notice of motion, item 10.1, a five-minute speaking limit for members of council at committee and council meetings. As well, it's not listed on the agenda, but you will probably find somewhere in your agenda an item 9.1. It's a motion respecting Ward 4 playgrounds. That was simply a sheet, that was already addressed at Public Works yesterday. It was simply a sheet on my desk that got picked up with the agenda, so my apologies, that should not be in there.
Thank you, Stephanie. And just for clarification, you said for January 17, that was the 4.2, that's today?
That's Viv Saunders, correct.
Thank you. So, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Council Vanderby, Council Pearson, all those in favor? Thank you. Declarations of interest, are there any? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. I need approval for four meetings, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, December 1st, December 6th, December 18th, and the second one, the special ward boundary, December 18th. Please have a motion, Council Conley, Council Whitehead, all those in favor. All those in favor? Wow. Delegation requests. We have one from the Nicola Tesla Education Corporation, respecting the 120th anniversary of the Hamilton's power turned on for a future GIC, what is the wish of council? Moved it by Council Pearson, second by Council Farr, all those in favor? Thank you. Viv Saunders, respecting item 8.8, for today's GIC, what is the wish of council? Council Pearson? Council Partridge, all those in favor? Thank you. Consent items, folks? Let's get there. 5.1, wait a minute, 5.1 to 5.7, may I please have a motion to receive those items, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Kelsey Green?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to still voice some concerns that I have over the line warranty program. The way that it's communicated to the community, there's still lots of unreadiness. Every time they do a mail-out, I get calls from folks asking if it's a scam, they want all the information, and I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can better communicate, or at least have them put in their branding, because it has our city logo on it, some kind of clearer disclaimer? Because I promise you, the next mail-out that goes, I'll get some calls again with people asking if it's a scam.
So, we've got Mr. Segarek or Mr. Savoye?
Through the chair, we can work with Service Line Warranties of Canada to see with respect to the next communication, and I believe there's two per year, whether or not we can bold or enhance the reference as it relates to a independent program that is supported by the City of Hamilton.
Council Green?
Okay, and so, any calls that come in, I just go, I just direct them to your office, Mike, continue to do that?
Mr. Segarek?
So, through the chair, the customer contact center is aware, made aware each time that there is a communication, and so they should be able to respond to any issues that constituents have. So, I would ask that committee members direct any inquiries to the customer contact center, City of Hamilton Customer Contact Center.
Thank you, Council Green. Thank you. Council Pearson? Just a second, sorry.
Madam Chair, and certainly, I appreciate and want to thank staff. This was a wonderful initiative, I'm glad that we're continuing it. I have a number of residents in my ward, just had one the other day, that she's at her wits' end, she's a senior, has had many drainage problems, it's been determined it is on her property, and, you know, the light goes off going service line warranties. She says, "Well, I've got that somewhere." I said, "Well, go find your paperwork, if you don't have it, call me, and I'll get it for you so you can apply, and then if something happens again, you've got coverage." So, I'm really pleased to see over 12,000 residents in Hamilton have taken up and enrolled with service line warranties, and it's, I'm going to say, it's probably saved if the city was to have embarked on these repairs, over a million dollars in savings. So, that's what the company has put out as far as claims, and no claims have been denied. So, I think that's great news, it's a superb company. I have had no issues with it and with residents who have called me, just asking whether they should or shouldn't take advantage of it. So, I want to commend staff for bringing this forward a few years ago, and certainly hope that we do continue it. I think it's a great incentive and opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next up is Council Merilla. Council Merilla, is this 5.1? Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mike. Mike, what is the present disclaimer that's included in the letter? I can't recall, I know I've, I too have received complaints about whether or not people perceived it as a scam or not, but I just can't recall what the disclaimer in the letter reads. Does anybody know?
Mike, is there a disclaimer in the letter?
So, through the chair, and we can circle back and provide the latest communication. The letter does identify it's an optional program, it's not a mandatory program. It makes reference to Service Line Warranties of Canada program that is endorsed or supported by the City of Hamilton. We do provide contact information, direct contact information for Service Line Warranties of Canada, so that any property owners or residents who receive the communication can contact them directly. However, we do support as well through our customer contact center, if there are any inquiries from citizens directly to the City of Hamilton concerning the legitimacy, or any questions concerning the program that is supported through the customer contact center as well. But we can circle back and provide committee members with the latest, or if you desire a bit of a history in terms of the communications. Again, I believe we are down to two per year, the first few years, we were more involved in terms of communication, there were more communications going out, I believe up to four, and that's been scaled back to, I believe, two per year now.
Council Merilla?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think, Mike, being proactive on this particular issue, and having the contact number, or the city contact center number included in the body of the letter, would probably go a long way in preventing people from being suspicious, and I'm wondering if perhaps through you, Madam Chair, if that in itself can be just pursued, which I believe would resolve the problem.
Mike?
So, through the chair, we can look at that, as well as typically, and I was corrected it as three correspondences that are sent out per year, is we could look to, typically there's a quote from myself in that letter, and we could look to amend that quote to identify the legitimacy of the program, so that any residents who receive it see my reference to it, and we can look to support that with reference to the customer contact center. So, again, in an effort to further support the legitimacy of the program, and it really does provide value to residents, especially during this time of year when residents are dealing with frozen water lines, that is one of the products and services that is offered through this program. through this program.
Thank you, Councillor.
And again, through you, Madam Chair. Mike, I don't think, I'm not questioning the merits of the program, I strongly support it, but I think even if they have an endorsement from you, that itself can be perceived suspiciously as well. I think including the city contact number in itself is, will largely deal with the issue, so that rather than contacting their council, which in essence, we're now referring it to staff, it bogs down the issue. If they go directly to the call center, three times a year, it'll be self-explanatory once they contact the number. So I just hope that you can look at that as a feasibility of pursuing it, and perhaps just report back to us, just so that we're proactive on preventing that from occurring orderly. Through you, Madam Chair.
And they're all nodding, but Mike, I think still wants to turn it on.
So through the chair, we'll take that as direction.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead, is this about the, thank you, 5.1? Hang on a second, sorry. There's a delay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think it would be prudent for staff, or Mike, to explain the process in which we chose the provider, because I think that's one of the questions that often get asked, is, you know, why is it this one? I think, if I recall, I had one person calling, and I believe it's an American company, and was a bit confused on why they were receiving this warranty program from what appeared to be an American company. Now, so could you just provide a little context on the process in which they were awarded the privilege?
So through the chair, it was through a RFP process, a competitive process, I'll just remind committee members, the City of Hamilton, I believe, was the first municipality in Ontario to offer its residents such a service through a partnership. Since that time, AMO has participated and is leveraging the City of Hamilton's partnership through Service Line Warranties of Canada, and other municipalities now, I believe, are participating. I believe Peel, and I believe Toronto was looking at it as well. But the process was a competitive process. Again, it was a new product or service offered in Ontario, and staff had just pointed out, Appendix A to the report that's before you today, has a listing of all the municipalities that are now participating in Ontario with Service Line Warranties of Canada.
Councillor?
Is there any evidence at this point in time, since we've embarked on this program, that there have been inscrupulous operators trying to lay the same claim and try to take advantage of the residents of Hamilton?
Mike?
So through the chair, if I understand the question, I'm not aware of any other entities or companies who are misrepresenting themselves locally as it relates to Service Line Warranties of Canada. I'm not aware, if I understood the question.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that the general public understand that as far as we know, there hasn't been any abuse of the communications in our community in regards to accessing this program. And I want to also echo that I had a number of people in my own ward that, you know, obviously made inquiries, and one senior understood, because it is a bit unique where you're receiving a letter from a private sector type company, it's got a city logo on it, and suggesting that you might want to, and it's not prescriptive, but you, there was an option for you to purchase the insurance. Once it's clarified in the process which we've embarked on, and what this is all about, most of the residents I've talked to that are now obviously subscribing to this program, and a couple of them actually have now taken advantage of it, are very, very pleased with what is transpiring, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson, 5.1?
Sorry, just one thing I forgot to mention, and it only just came up recently, there are two phone numbers in the material that's supplied to residents. I think one phone number relates to if you want to cancel receiving the material, and it's a different number, and people, I've had a couple of calls, say they've called that number and there's no answer. So I correct them and say, "Well, this is the number you call if you're interested in service." So I've been able to pass that information, but you might want to ask the company how they want to deal with that, because it is a bit confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhausts the speakers list, so may I please have a motion to receive items 5.1, 5.6, and 5.7? So moved by Councillor Whitehead, second by Councillor Skelly, all those in favor? Thank you. Now I need items 5.2, 5.5, we need a mover and a seconder to approve. Councillor Conley? Councillor Farr? All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearings, Viv Saunders, I don't see her, so I'd like to bump her up, so we'll see what happens and what time she gets here. So now we're jumping right into 8.1. Thank you. Councillor Partridge, Councillor Ferguson, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. 8.2, Westdale Village, BIA. Thank you. Councillor, oh, Councillor Pearson, Councillor Conley, all those in favor? Thank you. 8.3, Main West? Thank you. Councillor Farr, Councillor Whitehead, all those in favor? Thank you. 8.4, Environmental Remediation and Site Enhancement. Councillor Green, Councillor Whitehead, all those in favor? And 8.5, Environmental Remediation and Site Enhancement Redevelopment Grant Application for 12 Lansford? Thank you. Councillor Farr, Councillor Marula, all those in favor? Come on, folks, you've got to wake up. 8.6, Hamilton Community Heritage Fund Loan Program, 51 Markland Street? Thank you. Councillor Farr, Councillor Whitehead, all those in favor? Thank you. 8.7, Office 10, thank you. Councillor Pearson, Councillor Farr, all those in favor? Woo-hoo! 8.8, Tax Assistance Programs for Seniors and Low-Income Persons with Disabilities. I still don't see Viv Saunders here, so can I please have a mover and seconder? I'm so sorry, Councillor Jackson, just getting into the groove, man.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I always, like I said, I always feel like the family feud that I've got to really pound down on this to sometimes get the attention while we're working through the new system. So Madam Deputy Mayor, for some of, I've mentioned this to some of my colleagues, didn't get around to seeing all of you before Christmas, but if I could, just before I have staff kind of walk us through what's before us, I want you and my colleagues, Madam Deputy Mayor, to know, first of all, I'm very strongly supportive of this. The essence of this report, this tax assistance program for seniors and low-income persons with disabilities, in essence, for seniors, and this came to my attention by the Greenley family of East 36th Street, elderly couple living in their home, and their son, Michael, who's advocated for about six months that I've been working with him, with finance staff, with the Seniors Advisory Committee, and the Accessible Committee for Persons with Disabilities. So Madam Deputy Mayor, the bottom line of this is that for many seniors who wish to stay in their homes, really until the very, very end of life, do not wish to be institutionalized, but have difficulties on limited disposable income, sometimes could end up being forced out of their homes, we already offer our tax rebate program of $186 a year for seniors that qualify, that's wonderful, one of few municipalities in Ontario that does. This would allow seniors who currently cannot pay their property taxes, that they would be allowed to enter into a full tax deferral program, which would allow them to defer, currently we allow for the interest, the increase each year to be deferred here in Hamilton. But this is a program that Ottawa and Halton, Madam Deputy Mayor, just in the last year or two, have implemented, and came to my attention, and in essence, what this would do is, it would allow a senior citizen, couple, widow, widower, those with disabilities on limited income, to defer the entire amount of their property taxes indefinitely, but when the property is then sold, when their home and property is sold, Madam Deputy Mayor, then the City of Hamilton would recoup entirely all the past property tax amounts that we're owing to the City of Hamilton. I think it's a fabulous program, another wonderful way of supporting the seniors in our community. Madam Deputy Mayor, what I wanted to ensure was through this process, and this is where General Manager Mike Segarek can provide some comment and hopeful reassurances, only concern I had was potentially that if we were in line of other creditors, like a bank, a mortgage, whatever, I wanted to make sure that the City of Hamilton was not going to have to forego recouping any of the past property taxes that we're owing from the particular property where the seniors lived. So Madam Deputy Mayor, this outlines a three-year pilot program. Gloria Rojas from Finance and Tom Hewittson have been the mainstays that have attended seniors advisory committee meetings of the past in the fall. My seniors advisory committee that Madam Deputy Mayor, you and I serve on at the pleasure of this council, they have unanimously endorsed this program. My understanding is through ACPD and Councillor Marula's work, that committee has also endorsed this program with those with disabilities on limited low income. I think it's a fabulous opportunity to recognize our seniors in a greater way, we recently did it with Councillor Skelly in the hearing loops. Madam Deputy Mayor, this is a wonderful opportunity to allow a senior to stay in their home, and the city and the broad-based taxpayers and citizens of our city will not be out a single dime, because once the property is sold, when that senior were to pass on, end up moving in with a loved one, ultimately be institutionalized if necessary at the very end, that the City of Hamilton, upon the real estate sale, would gather all of its income. So with that long preamble, I've been involved with this from the get-go, along with yourself, Madam Deputy Mayor, at the seniors advisory committee, could I now just ask maybe for some more professional bureaucratic comment from General Manager Mike Segarek through you, for Mike to fill in any gaps and any additional information my colleagues might need? Madam Deputy Mayor, please.
Mr. Segarek, bureaucratic comment?
So through the chair, I just want to suggest that that preamble was very comprehensive in terms of the changes, and I would just add a few factors in terms of what is being proposed. As Councillor Jackson identified, this is proposed to be a three-year pilot, and as Councillor Jackson identified, the principal change, there's two programs, and I'll focus on the one that Councillor Jackson's spoken to this morning, which is the tax deferral program. The change, as Councillor Jackson's identified, is amending the program such that it's not simply the change in taxation that is being, so the increase in the property tax from year to year, but it is the property tax bill as a whole that is being deferred. And I would just add, the, one of the criteria is, as Councillor Jackson's identified, is that the city would be made whole through the disposition of that property, when that property is disposed of by the property owner. The other factor that could trigger is, the deferral is capped at 40% of the assessed value, so there is a threshold to try to protect the city's risk as it relates to the amount of the deferral against the potential future value of the property. So that's one of the other criteria that is included in the program. The other criteria that I think is important to highlight to committee and to residents is that there is a cost to borrow, essentially an interest rate that's applied on the deferral. Currently, that would represent about 5% based on today's terms, and how the City of Hamilton would essentially make itself whole with respect to the foregone tax benefit, in part is through that 5% interest rate that's applied against the deferral. Some of the other nuances is, there is a small application and renewal fee, and that a portion of that would help to assist with respect to the additional half FDE that staff are identifying is required to support that program, and that would represent a cost of about $41,000. So that is the tax deferral program. The report that's before you as well touches upon the tax rebate program, and you'll recall that the City of Hamilton offers a tax rebate program for seniors of age 65 or greater, and that rebate in 2017 represented approximately $186 for any eligible recipients, and there are criteria thresholds with respect to income and property criteria, and this report just further updates that program. Some minor amendments to the program, we don't expect that these amendments will affect the participation of those eligible for the program, but as we were looking at the senior and low-income deferral program, we did some housekeeping with respect to the seniors rebate program. And if there are any further questions specific to the mechanics, we have staff available, both Gloria and Brian here, who can speak to the mechanics of what is being proposed.
Thank you very much, Mike, for the additional information, and I should have mentioned as well, your Director Brian McMullin, who was involved as well with staff, Gloria and Tom. Mike, has there been any feedback? Again, I mentioned that Halton region and Ottawa are about a year ahead of us, doing the full tax deferral. Through your counterparts in Halton and Ottawa, any feedback at all in terms of the uptake there, upside-downsides so far they've experienced, or is still too new and early in the programs there to garner any feedback? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you?
Thank you. Mike? Little pow-wow going on.
So, so through you, Chair. The Ottawa and the Halton program are slightly different. I believe in Halton, Halton does not apply a interest rate to it, and so the feedback that we have in part is a bit more ability, affordability in Halton to accommodate that versus jurisdictions such as Ottawa or Hamilton. Beyond that, I haven't had any direct conversations with my counterparts with respect to either some of the positive transition impacts, or whether or not they're having to amend their program because of any unforeseen negative impacts of it. But again, as Councillor Jackson's identified, they are early into their program as well, and we would continue to be in consultation with them, and if there are any learnings from those jurisdictions, we would bring it back to this committee if there's an effort to improve the program.
Terrific, Mike. And Mike, similar for my colleagues, just to raise, if they need their comfort level raised a little bit here, similar to the seniors tax rebate program that we provide annually, criteria, is there like income criteria, would there be household criteria, market value assessment potential criteria if we moved ahead with this full tax deferral program? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, please, to Mike?
Mike?
So through the chair, I'm going to ask Brian or Gloria to speak to the actual mechanics of the program.
Terrific, thank you. Mike or Gloria, please?
Gloria? Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, the program, we have listed all the criteria in Appendix P. Pretty much, we are making these three programs a little bit similar in the criteria, so that they are very easy to understand. For the full deferral of tax programs, the main criteria is eligibility, so we're making all seniors and low-income people with disabilities eligible for this program. There is an income criteria as well, is consistent with the criteria that we have for the tax rebate program. At this moment, it's $34,800, that was for 2017. This is a criteria that we review annually, and we will continue to do so. We are also making sure that the deferred amounts plus applicable interest doesn't go beyond 40% of the assessment value of the property.
Very good, Gloria. I think, yeah, you provided some additional information to raise our comfort level, thank you. And again, overall, Mike, as General Manager, I feel that this is a worthwhile program to at least initiate the three-year pilot, and we'll have some regular semi-annual monitoring of it. If it helps even some seniors to stay in their home, I think it's absolutely worthwhile to initiate this program. Mike, do you feel, from what you know of the program and the work, and the report that's been provided by your staff, that there's enough checks and balances in place here to move ahead with this pilot? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you?
So through the chair, I do, absolutely. Again, we've capped the amount of the deferrals relative to assessed value, and I think that provides some risk mitigation for the City of Hamilton. provides some risk mitigation for the City of Hamilton and our residents. As well as, as Gloria has identified, there is continuity between the programs to make it easier for residents to navigate, referenced to income thresholds relative to GIS. So, again, that provides some benefit to residents in that they're not trying to navigate two very different programs, so there's some similarities to the program. And also, I think it's timely, given the transition that the City of Hamilton's gone through with respect to assessed values, it's probably timely that we review these programs, both the tax rebate deferral program. We've experienced some significant uplift in assessed values. We know we have an aging population, and so it's timely for us to pilot, measure, and assess the value of such a change in terms of some tax relief for our residents.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Deputy Mayor, I want to recognize Ms. Saunders is here in the audience. She's known my work with seniors and has provided in the past, any issues with seniors, some valuable inputs, so I'm glad that she's here now to speak to this. But again, Madam Deputy Mayor, even if there may be some reservations, I would humbly suggest, and on behalf of the Greenleaf family of the East Mountain who brought this to my attention, I think this is a most worthy program for this council body to continue to support the elderly, the seniors who want to stay in their homes with proper support, knowing their local government is there for them as well, along with those low-income with disability families as well. At the appropriate time, I'd be happy to move it after Ms. Saunders has her opportunity to speak. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I have another speaker, Council Pearson, and then we'll ask Viv to come on down.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly appreciate Council Tom Jackson's thorough questioning. He always covers things very well when it comes to seniors and low income. So, first and foremost, appreciate the report here today by all staff involved, and Mike, thank you so much. I think reading it over, I went through over it a couple times last night, our number-one initiative should also be in keeping our tax increases as low as possible every year, and I know we work really hard, staff work really, really hard to get us to that level that we give direction to every year. I believe this year, we recommended, I think it's 1.5, 1.8? 1.5. And we're at, we were at 2.4, but that has since changed with regards to the Stelco lands, appraisals, values, and the Conservation Authority decision, if I'm not mistaken, so I think we're at 2.9. And unfortunately, I'm saying this because residents have to understand, these are issues that were out of our control. So, we still have the budget deliberations go through, and we have, you know, we'll be making some major decisions in the next few weeks. But with regards to this report, Mike, questions that I have, and I appreciate certainly support, what we can do to help seniors. I thought it was also timely because I just had a senior call me a few days ago, pretty well in tears, because he worked for Sears all his life and has lost his pension. And he's devastated now because he does not know, he's on his own, does not know how he's going to be able to stay in his home. I certainly had the suggestion of the seniors rebate, which we had available at this time, but if we move forward with this, this is certainly something that can help him, and I know we have many more residents in our community that have been affected the same way. So, questions I do have are, first off, and on the program, recognizing it is new, across Ontario anyways, how would we deal with if it's a three-year pilot and we decided to pull it three years now? What do we do for the seniors and the low-income that we have allowed this process to go forward? Now, all of a sudden, they're faced with all these years of taxes. Just enlighten me how that would be dealt with.
Thank you, Mike.
So, through the chair, in terms of that potential scenario, is what I would envision, and this is somewhat preliminary, we haven't had the conversation, in terms of, at the end of the three years, if committee and council chose that there was no benefit or value in terms of this change in the program, is, one option is we could grandfather, for instance, those individuals who participated through the three years, so not to negatively affect their involvement during the pilot project and create any financial hardship or personal hardship on those individuals, that is an option. The other option is to collect the amount that's been deferred exclusive of what they would have been eligible for as it relates to the change, as it relates to the taxation levy increase, so that's an option. But I would suggest that this time is, we wouldn't want to create any financial hardship or personal hardship on individuals, and there would always be an opportunity to grandfather and transition those properties, those residents who participated in the pilot.
Thank you, Counselor. And I just wanted to be sure that, you know, there's always that other end that we have to think about because three years goes by very fast, and just be sure the staff have that on the radar to make sure. And I'm not anticipating there will be a change, but just in case, we never know how market values are going to go either. Second question, I see that we're recommending a fee that they would have to pay to initialize, and I'm seeing it's $200 and then $100. Is that for the renewal every year, the $100?
Thank you. Mike?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And I'm hoping my last question, how would we deal with, and obviously, when they apply for a fee, we're sure that title is clear, we need to know that we're number one as a lien against the property, and I think the City of Hamilton always is the first on title, is that not correct?
So, through the chair, we're close. The Crown is always first. And so, in terms of risk, we feel that in part from the 40% assessment cap and recognizing that the city next to the Crown is, in terms of order of arrears, again, they're eligible next to the Crown. So, again, staff feel that the cap in terms of relative to assessment and our high order in terms of eligibility to collect provides us that risk mitigation.
Counselor?
Okay, I said that would hopefully be my last question, so I have one more. How do we address, if there's liens on the property, I'm going to say, because I hear it more and more in commercials, these reverse mortgages. So, a senior goes out, reverse mortgages a property to the max, where does the city sit on that?
Mike?
So, through the chair, I think I've lost something in the question, sorry.
So, if they've gotten a reverse mortgage, which is a good chunk of the value of the property, as Counselor's aware of, I don't know if he's taken advantage of it, so that's now automatically coming off the property. I'm not sure how that program works for seniors, but it is available to them, and it gives them liquid cash, is my understanding, going through their retirement. So, we would still, if they applied for this, we still have the protection up to the 41%?
Yeah. So, through the chair, in terms of ordering, I think it relates to the Counselor's previous question, that financial institution or credit vehicle that the property owner is, the city would have in terms of ordering, we would be kept whole before that financial institution or...
Counselor? And then, so we would have to do a search on every request, application comes in, or they'd have to provide that information, so we have it on record, correct?
Mike?
So, through the chair, we'll take that away. I'm not sure that in terms of our risk, whether it is the city who would do the search, to be honest, or that financial institution who's looking at providing that credit vehicle to the property owner, as they may be taking on a greater risk than the City of Hamilton as it relates to any liens on that property.
Thank you.
We'll take that away.
I'll leave that with you, to take that away, Mike, because I know that staff will do a great job in evaluating and protecting all taxpayers in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Sir Whitehead?
Yeah, I just want to, I'm not sure if you identified it, but we did have a delegation to speak to this issue. Are we doing that before we make any approvals of this? Thank you.
Ms. Saunders, would you like to come down, please?
That works? Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My first appointment ran late.
Just to remind you, it's a five-minute rule unless the committee chooses otherwise.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Tom, for allowing me and allowing me to speak and meet with staff and all the great staff that are here. Today, I am before you as a financial planner. I know I've worn different hats in the past, but today is financial planner. And I originally started last spring, you may recall, that I wrote to each of you about the criteria and the $34,800. My concern on that stemmed from the fact that, based on my observation, and I'm referring to Appendix C, the seniors 65 tax rebate right now, based on my observation, it is a great program for middle-income, single seniors. It loses, under the criteria, it loses married people that are over 65, married that has a spouse under 65, that are receiving the guaranteed income supplement. To me, that is the definition, or a very easy definition, if that is the goal of council, for people to get this rebate. There is a large group that are missed in the program. Second concern that I had when I was first speaking is the 120% of the assessment value. For the most part, this side of the room, your seniors do not qualify. Our assessed values in the outer wards, I'll refer to the outer wards, are greater than 409. Pardon me. Sorry, I'm nervous because I was running late. The average on this side at 120% of assessed value is about 469, pardon me, $469,000. The inner wards, 120% of your average assessed values is about 307. And I don't want to get divisive, but this side of the room's assessment value are boosting taxpayers on this side of the room, boosting them up from the 307 to the 409. I do have clients in Ward 10 that don't qualify, old age, 66 years, 67 years old, on GIS, qualified based on income, but their homes are worth $420,000. That is the biggest concern I had on the seniors tax rebate program, or tweaks that I would like to see changed for, to make it a more inclusive program. The other concern I had is that we use full OAS pension as a qualification. Full OAS pension is eligible to people who have lived and resided in Canada for 40 years. It is not inclusive, therefore, to other people who have come to Canada later. We're unique in using full OAS rather than just someone on OAS as a senior. Regarding, on Appendix B, regarding the full tax deferral program, my concern stems in that the city is sort of delving into people's finances, and I don't know if that's a place where you want to be. All of the presentations that I've read, all of these reports, nowhere have I read that these seniors or low-income people are going to lose the government property tax credits. Okay? The requirement to receive the $500 homeowner's grant money from the Ontario Provincial Government, or federal, and the provincial tax credits, which gives these people trillion monthly income benefits, roughly $100 in some cases, you have to pay your taxes. If you choose to defer them, you're not paying them, according to Canada Revenue Agency. That is a huge concern of mine, that no one is aware of that so far. One minute?
Actually, I should have warned you, it's four-minute rule, so I'll give you one minute.
Okay. I'll leave it at that.
Oh, there you go.
Because I think those are big concerns.
Thank you.
I'm open to any questions if you have some.
Well, that's great. Council Jackson, you're on the list.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Viv, for coming in and along the way, providing your finance background input. Viv, you're aware of the fact that Halton and Ottawa are about a year ahead of us. In light of your two or three concerns, are you aware of Halton or Ottawa's way of getting around or accommodating some of your concerns? Not asking you if you delved into their municipalities, but given the knowledge you have, I just wondered if you're aware of the concerns you have, if they were aware of them, and if they found a way to accommodate it, so nobody, no senior suddenly becomes ineligible from either guaranteed income, OAS, versus wanting to help them with a full deferral of their property taxes. Madam Deputy Mayor, through to Viv, if she's aware of how Halton and Ottawa have handled this, please.
Through the chair, it's, I mean, I'd be guessing. Their program, when I first looked at it, because their income threshold is about $45,000, I think in one case, they're not really targeting low-income seniors. That is the middle income, and as a financial advisor, I would, at that income level, you're dealing with a clientele that is much more astute on finances. So, their programs could be used as a way of getting low credit and reinvesting it. I mean, it gets a little bit more sophisticated, but at the true low income, this is not good for people.
Okay. I respect your opinion, Viv, but I, obviously, Madam Deputy Mayor, I still feel what staff's recommendation, at the end of the day, it's worth a try, and maybe along the way, as those are participating and eligible for the program, if we move ahead today, then we can see some of the concerns, and I'm sure along the way, either during this last year or this term of council, Madam Deputy Mayor, if we move ahead today, and/or whoever's here next year in the new term of council can assess it as we're moving forward, if anybody's being left behind, that we can always make amendments to the program. But again, for the seniors that I'm aware of, I believe that there's a large body of them out there that this would at least help to some degree. But thank you, Viv, for appearing. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Viv, I've got a couple more speakers, so hang in there.
Okay.
Counselor Whitehead?
I guess the experience in, I don't think it's unique to the outlying area, I mean, certainly on the mountain, it's probably very similar, that you have asset-rich, cash-poor in the context of going into survival mode and making very tough decisions. So, I can appreciate the analysis that you made in respect to the assessment and how that has an impact on, you know, the people's ability to actually benefit from the program. So, I guess my question to, if I have the latitude, Vivian has identified a number of concerns, I was looking forward to having staff perhaps respond to their findings or understanding in those areas.
Thank you. You know what, we'll stick with questions to Ms. Saunders, and then we'll go back to staff after. So, do you have any questions for Ms.?
I want to reserve the right to have staff. I want to note, staff, that I will be asking to respond.
Sorry, can you just request again, I'm putting you on an alternate list so that you can ask staff questions, so just punch up your name, please, respect on the alternate. And it didn't work. I apologize. Go ahead, Counselor Whitehead, I'll put you down.
Well, you don't want me to ask questions now, right?
We'll ask questions after.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, we'll add, Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Vivian, for bringing this information forward. And certainly, I also want to have staff address the concerns you raised. So, just can you enlighten on the Ontario tax credit? What would a taxpayer in the ballpark, what is the total amount that, and I'm not at that point, so I don't know what the amount of, total amount of Ontario tax credit that a resident could receive if they were fully eligible?
I did an example, I picked a house, I just picked one in Albany, just, and I did an example of someone earning $25,000 per year. And if they're senior, their tax credit would be about $1,700 per year.
So, that could be almost half of what, well...
Their taxes are on this house, I'm sorry.
Through the chair.
Thank you, and please, that was the question I was going to ask, and what were their property taxes?
$21.52.
About half, thank you. Thank you for that information. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any more questions for Ms. Saunders. Move to receive, and then we'll go to questions to staff. Sorry, I was trying to get to the alternate queue and put you on the alternate queue to ask staff questions, but it's sort of... Daryl, come on now. Anyways, thank you very much. All those in favor? Thank you. So, can I please ask Counselor Whitehead to put a request in? And Counselor Pearson, you wanted to ask questions, put a request in, so Counselor Whitehead is first. Can you put your request in, please? Okay, Counselor Whitehead?
Yeah, so, staff, I hopefully identified that, I think it was the four points that were made, or areas of concern, so can I ask Mike or whoever will be responding to, provide whatever information they have in that regard?
Thank you. Mike?
So, through the chair, I'll start, and I do appreciate Viv's feedback as it relates to her actual experience implementing some of these programs as it relates to her clients. If I can start with the assessment, the reference to the 120% of assessment, I think Viv's identified that that represents eligibility of $409,000 assessed value. That's not a change, we've had that criteria, 120%, what we've made an effort to do is identify need, so what portion of our property owners really require such a program in order for them to continue to reside in their home and continue to have a quality of life? And so... And so, again, it's somewhat arbitrary. What we try to do is by 120% is to exceed the 100% in terms of the citywide average, and as is identified, the experience will vary across the city, but we had to apply a citywide. So rather than simply go with the average assessed value across the city, we pegged it at 120% over and above the average. So again, the purpose for that is to try to differentiate those who need such a program versus those who might financially benefit from such a program.
Counselor? Oops, sorry.
With respect to, and I'd be happy to answer your questions with each other.
Mr. Chair, I'll wait till Mike responds to the four points, and then if I have any further clarification, I'll...
No, I understand that. Thank you.
With respect to, the delegation also may reference to income. The income is for 2017, that was, it's arrived at through reference to 150% of the GIC maximum annual income, as well as referenced to the OAS pension, but the figure that results as, as it relates to those two references is $34,800. When we look at our comparators or other municipalities, somewhat lower than some, I believe Toronto was 50,000, Halton, as I think, as Viv's identified, is greater. But again, it was calculated to try to differentiate between need versus those who would financially benefit. So again, staff have tried to peg that value, rather than, you may recall, under our previous program, those values were stagnant for periods of five years, six years. And so what we've tried to do is relate it to, for instance, GIS, and to apply 150% so that it would be fluid and it would change each year as those references, for instance, GIS changes. So again, in terms of how we've arrived at that figure, we've arrived at that figure in part so that it's somewhat fluid. It changes from year to year, and there isn't a period, a period where it's stagnant and we have to do a catch-up. And again, we're trying to identify need within our community. With respect to, I'm going to ask Gloria to speak to, she may be more familiar with the property tax credit. I know it's referenced in our reports, so I'm going to ask Gloria to speak to the Ontario property tax credit.
Gloria?
I believe there is a $500 credit from the government, property tax credit, as I believe the Ontario tax credit. I'm not familiar with the one that Viv mentioned to us, so I wouldn't be able to compare what she said to what I'm aware. Unfortunately, we don't have any information from Halton or from Ottawa respecting their experience with the program and the possibility of being not compatible with receiving this federal or the Ontario credit. That's something that we can come back to you later if council would like for us to bring that information back. There was another point made by Viv regarding that the seniors' program excludes married people. Maybe that's, is not clear, but we use the criteria from the GIS received by married people to set up the $34,800, but it doesn't mean that excludes married people. So that's the data from the Government of Canada that we take to make the calculation, but the $34,800 applies to every applicant regardless of marital status.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
So maybe start backwards. Help me understand from the, the program seems to be more targeted to senior singles than it does facilitate married seniors. So this program, I take it, is based on total household income?
So Mike or Gloria?
That's correct. Total combined income of the applicant and the spouse's applicant should be less than $34,800 regardless of marital status.
Thank you, Counselor.
So then it's highly likely, if you have two seniors that have some level of pension, that they would exceed the low cutoff number. Is that correct?
Gloria, did you hear the question? No, can you repeat the question, please? Counselor?
So a lot of, this is the challenge I've always had in regards to this sort of transitional piece, where the threshold is 30,000 or 34,000. You have a couple that bring in 38,000, now they disqualify because that's the total combined number, yet on a single, it's 30, you know, 34,000, if they're under 34,000, they would qualify. So all of a sudden, you got two people at 38,000 do not qualify, but you have one person at 34,000 that does qualify. And when you look at it from a, you know, just from a lifestyle equity approach, it seems hardly unfair to that couple in those circumstances.
Gloria?
Well, it is correct that the calculation applies regardless of marital status. Anyways, we have to set a threshold at some point, because this is 150% above what it is received by a couple. We believe that anyways, we're being quite generous, or well, I wouldn't say quite generous, but we are, we can offer the program to a larger number of people than if it was just based on GIS, for example.
Counselor?
So help me understand, common sense would prevail, that it would cost more for a couple to live than a single. Is that correct?
Mike?
So through the chair, again, recognizing that this is an application per household, and City of Hamilton's approaching this similar to other jurisdictions. If I look at our comparator groups, their programs are fashioned in the same manner as what we are proposing. They are applications based on income per household. So if I understand the counselor's question in terms of cost of living, yeah, cost of living would be typically greater for a household with two earners. However, affordability would improve, I would suggest, if you have two incomes in a household, that their ability to support that property tax burn-in change should improve as well. So if you have two seniors, so recognizing this program is targeted to seniors or low-income individuals with disabilities, if you have two individuals with defined pensions or pension income within that household, what we're trying to differentiate need versus those who would receive some sort of financial...
So Mike, what I...
Go on, through the chair, please.
Through the chair, the example I cited, and it's one that isn't unusual, because, you know, many seniors of the past didn't get cost inflation built into their pensions and so forth. So you could have a senior, if that threshold arguably is 34,000, that one senior would get all the benefit. But if you have two seniors that had two pensions with a combined that's at 38,000, which obviously has a higher living cost, would get absolutely no benefit. And so I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't provide a program that clearly identifies the cost of living for a couple versus a single, and the program would be appropriated accordingly? Because it's a pretty significant threshold for a single at 34,000 to get the full benefit, and a couple of 38,000 gets zero.
Gloria or Mike, please?
Through the chair. We have actually considered the option of incorporating a two-tiered income threshold, one for senior, for single seniors, and one for married couple. If we do that, then most likely, many seniors, many single seniors that today qualify for the program will fall off the threshold, and they won't be able to qualify anymore. So then I don't know if that necessarily is something that we would like. And also, having a two-tiered single would bring a lot of administrative, administration issues regarding all the validation that has to be done regarding marital status and so on.
Thank you.
So I guess, I was looking at something that might be a little more graduate or more real in the context of the practical impacts of these programs. So I would think that if we had, if this was truly about need, if it really was about need, that we would understand that we're just, you know, this program really isn't meeting the need of couples in the circumstances I portrayed, and there's a lot of those kinds of circumstances out there. So I would hope that what we would do is understand that the threshold for a couple in a household is different than from a single in a household, and that there might be a number variance between the two. So if you're a couple, a household income, or you're a single, household income, that they still would benefit from the program, but there's a recognition of the additional challenges for the couple by having that number obviously slightly higher than the single threshold, or the single household threshold.
Thank you. Mike?
So through the chair, I think what Gloria tried to, or is highlighting is a two-tier. The risk of a two-tier is if you had two criteria in terms of income, those individuals, single individuals who are accustomed to the $34,000 threshold, if we had it much lower, if we had, for instance, 25,000 for a single, they may fall off, and we could create some challenges for those individuals. But what is, it's at the discretion of committee, again, what is before you in terms of that income threshold. It's pegged to 150% of the GIS maximum annual income. If committee wishes to increase that threshold from 34,000 to 40,000, it's simply by adjusting that 150% to something greater than 150%. We arrive at that 34,800 based on 150% of the GIS. So again, it's at discretion of committee. If you wish to amend that income threshold either today, or if you wish committee or staff to review, report back on participation, provide feedback in terms of how residents have experienced this pilot project in terms of being ineligible, or if there's opportunities for us to report back on possibly a two-tier, recognizing that creates some administrative challenges, as well as we don't want to create some hardship for those single individuals who have historically participated. Or alternatively, today, committee could affect that income threshold and change that income threshold to expand it and effectively provide some greater participation, recognizing in the case of the tax rebate program, that is a levy-funded program. So again, we're trying to balance this relative to the levy. So as you increase either the assessment threshold, the income threshold, you would inevitably increase the potential participants, which could create a levy pressure going into 2018 or future years.
So I appreciate, certainly I'm not satisfied with where it's at, and I'm not clear what the administrative implications are, just to have a couple threshold being higher than a single threshold, which is more equitable than implying one threshold that a single could benefit from, but a couple's tied and constrained to that same value, which with a higher level of cost of living for the couple. So certainly, the way it is right now, I'm not satisfied. I think that you're going to penalize, and it's not equitable. And you think that the underlying lens that we would look at every program would be that equitable, to ensure that couples are getting fair treatment in regards to their challenges versus a single. But here, in this situation, we're really focusing on the single and not really contemplating the challenges of a couple. So I would hope that, I'm not sure what kind of direction I would need on that front, but I would hope that we can have a report, come back and understand the implications of having a two-tier, and a number that's more representative of a couple living and surviving in these times. So I would, are you looking for direction or motion through the chair to Mike?
So through the chair, a motion would be ideal in the sense of, A, timing, so what is before you today is, again, we committed during the 2000 and tail end of the 2017 budget process to report back for 2018, so some direction as to timing, as well as in terms of the two-tier system. We could report back with respect to administrative. I think just in terms of some preliminary response to that question is, we've had some experience in this program. What staff do not want to be put in a position is where we are policing applications, and so we've had experiences where children reside with elderly parents.
Mr. Chair, apparently...
Please, excuse me. I don't want to interrupt the speaker, so let's finish, let Mike finish, please.
Apparently, I'm asking too many questions, and I thought these were relevant and important questions to ask.
Okay, that's fine. You've got the chair. That's not your call, it's mine. Mike, are you finished?
Yeah. Through the chair, we could report back in terms of what that administrative impact would be on a two-tier system.
So what I'm hearing is, instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, we approve what's here today with the report coming back with the two-tier system for couples living at home. Counselor Whitehead, you still have the chair?
Yeah, so I don't want to get in the way of moving forward, but I think clearly there's an equity issue in regard to this program that's been clearly identified and needs to be addressed. So I look forward to our next actions to address that issue. But I think it's important, I don't know why anyone thinks that those questions aren't important.
I thought they were important, so that's why you kept talking.
So Mr. Chair, so that was on the assessment piece, oh, sorry, the livable wage, what is the annual income on a livable wage?
Mike?
So through the chair, not related to this report, but related to an economics paper I was helping my 17-year-old with over the weekend. The reference, I thought, was based on 2008, the livable wage, national livable wage was somewhere in the area of $56,000. $56,000.
Livable wage is $56,000, and our threshold is 34,800. I just want to highlight that, because I think, to me, that might be another area of concern and focus. If, you know, if truly we believe in livable wages, we're creating programs that are below the livable wage. On the assessment piece, you know, we talked about geographically, we could have many individuals in the exact situation from a financial flow point of view in regards to survivability or livability. But the assessment piece could be, and the principle that you have a house that's 490,000 assessment versus a $350,000 home, the principle is the same, that unless you are forced to sell, which I don't think, we're trying to, you know, help people live and continue living in their homes, they shouldn't be penalized on the different values because of their cash poor. Why would that have any relevance? Help me understand this, the assessment threshold. So the average in the City of Hamilton is what, 375,000?
So through the chair, the average was $315,000.
315?
Thank you.
Yeah, in my ward, for example, I think it's around 375. So clearly, from geographic area to geographic area, there are significant difference in average assessment. So from an equitable point of view, in regards to helping seniors in the need, taking the approach that we're taking with the numbers that you've allocated, are we actually penalizing those in higher assessed areas?
Mike?
So through the chair, the intent was not to penalize those with higher-than-average assessed values. In fact, the intent... In fact, the intent by pegging it to 120% of the average was to try to capture some of those property owners who might have assets or homes that have a valuation greater than the citywide average. So again, it was pegged at trying to achieve some consideration for those who may be somewhat have somewhat greater asset value and would have a home within a praised value, assessed value, sorry, greater than the average, and that was the intent. The intent was not to penalize those with a higher-than-average assessed value.
Hang on, let him finish.
So Mr. Chair, I guess my challenge is, and I think certainly the outlying areas can appreciate it, and I think even counselors on the mountain, you know, I have people that went in and bought their home for 40, 50, 60,000, and because of how the assessment, current value assessment works, all of a sudden their house might be worth 450, 500,000. But doesn't mean that their ability or their income has changed in any way. In fact, you know, they bought their house at 40,000 because that's what they could afford at the time. So the asset is an issue, it's a barrier for them accessing the program. Yet their financial ability to be treated equitably with these programs is called in the question with this scenario. And the reason I say that, because if the argument is, well, if you can afford a 490,000 house, well, let's be clear, they didn't buy a 490,000 house. In many cases, they bought a 50,000 or 60,000 home, which currently is 490,000. But I'm trying to understand from a principle point of view, if you live in a 350,000 home, or I guess you're saying the threshold is around 400,000, and you're living in a 500,000 home, what is the difference in the context of the need?
So through the chair, if I can try to address the need in terms of the programs, because I think we're somewhat focused on each program independently, rather than looking at the suite of programs that are being offered. So if I use the example of historically, our family, our parents, seniors in their late 80s, 90s, low-income, asset-rich, is while they may not be eligible for the tax rebate program, they would be eligible for the tax deferral program, because there isn't an assessment threshold on the tax deferral program. So in the case of that example of a need, while they may not be able to leverage the tax rebate of $186 in order to keep them housed in their home and in their neighborhood and community, is they would be eligible for the tax deferral program. So that's a decision property owners will have to make, is, you know, are they trying to leverage the $186,000 tax rebate, or do they have a greater need and they need to leverage the tax deferral program?
I think you meant $186.
$86, sorry.
$186,000 would be amazing.
Yeah.
Counselor Whitehead, so we found out there's two programs they can access regardless of them.
So again, from an equity point of view, you're basically saying that the person at a $375,000 house has two choices they can make, and you have somebody at a $500,000 house has two choices to make, but this, well, actually one choice to make. So that's my challenge, is that in one scenario they got two choices, and in another scenario you only have one choice. And yet, the need in regards to the liquidity or the financial ability and capacity of the individual could be the same.
So through the chair, if the question is, will there be property owners who have similar incomes but different assessed values, and one may be eligible for both programs and one eligible only for one, yes. And the simple response is, you know, we need to draw the lines in terms of criteria, and we're trying to identify some way to assist those with greater needs at the same time as we are, again, I'll mention balancing, trying to balance the levy pressure, and in the case of the tax rebate program, that is a levy-funded program, and trying to affect council's direction with respect to the levy.
Thank you, Counselor.
So Madam Chair, I appreciate the answers, but you can, I've identified, because I always try to take that lens of equity, and real need is people's ability to live, or be forced out of their house, and I don't think we should discriminate based on somebody living in a 300 or 400,000 home and somebody in a 500,000 home, that you have a greater level of options for the person living in the 400,000 home, and yet the income levels are the same. So I would hope that, but no, I also understand that no program is going to be perfect. This is the pilot, this is the beginning. I would hope that we look at creative ways to ensure that there's equity in the approach, because they're all the same taxpayer in this community and contribute this community in the same way, and they shouldn't be treated differently if they're in the same financial circumstance. So I would hope that moving forward, Madam Chair, that we can work with staff to identify those that are sort of left out of the program, that are in similar circumstances with the fact that they have a higher assessed home, that there might be other alternatives that we can look at to facilitate their survival. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think the staff are nodding their heads, and Mike wants to have the last word.
So through the chair, I just want to just draw your attention. You're going to see on page 10 of 12, the suite of other programs the city offers. So while we're very focused on these tax programs, we shouldn't lose sight that we have a utility arrears program, we have a low-income and seniors dental program, we have special support for low-income seniors with health-related benefits, HSR seniors, Bears and Presto, Golden Pass Recreation Fee Assistance Program. So just a reminder, while we're focused on these two specific programs, is we have a suite of programs that we offer to seniors and low-income. So again, I just don't want to lose sight of all the other ways that we try to affect and benefit our seniors and our low-income residents.
Thank you, Mike, and I've got Counselor Pearson now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly great questions and comments around the table, and Mike, thank you for the clarification, but I want to make one point, Mike is absolutely right, and we have it on the report, page three of 12, the seniors' tax rebate is a levy cost, and it was almost $600,000 in 2016. So that affects, the taxes obviously going up in the future. So we have to be careful of what criteria we set, because that affects what we end up costing other taxpayers in the long run. So the only question I had, and I appreciate that staff's going to go back, is looking at the question that Ms. Saunders raised with regards to the Ontario Tax Credit, and I'm confused as to the 1,700. I don't think that she's relating to that as a tax credit. That might just be on the Ontario, the old age security possibly, I'm not sure. So I appreciate if staff would investigate this and bring it back, because I know on the report, it says that it's, the Ontario Tax Credit is a maximum of up to $500. I think, Gloria, you mentioned that, so I appreciate the clarification. I don't want to slow this down, I think we need to start it and make, keep it going forward, because we've got a lot of needy people out there, and whatever we can do to assist, you know, I think this is the day and age that we have to do that. But I do want to have staff address some of this stuff, and I'd like to ask, you know, at the appropriate time, I don't know whether to add it on into the recommendation, but could staff report back in a year and just give us, give an idea as to what the uptake has been? And with regards to valid question that has been raised at the suburban area, we won't have as many taxpayers being able to take advantage of it, and I know we have to be careful under and FIPPA and everything else, but if you can just have a report that says so many from the urban, so many from the suburban area that took advantage of the program would help us evaluate better, or the new counselors around the table, evaluate exactly where things are falling with regards to this program. So if I can ask, did that be part of the input that comes back probably in a year? I'd appreciate that, Madam Chair.
So through the chair, we'll take that as direction to report annually with respect to the participation, as well as any learnings that we have going through the pilot project. So I think it's important for committee to recognize, again, the recommendation before you is it's a three-year pilot project, which will give committee the opportunity either to wait till the end of the three years to amend, but if we see a gap in the program early on, as committee has always afforded the opportunity to amend it during the pilot program period.
Thank you. So now we've got three different directions for staff. One was to look at the combined income, the asset threshold, and update on the program geographically, correct? Did I miss anything so far? Thank you. Counselor Marilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just getting back on the assessed value. Through you, Madam Chair, what's the average assessed value of the home in Hamilton? It's 300 and?
315, I heard, but let's get Mike, oh, he's shaking his head, 315,000.
315, but the assessed value is not the actual value. The actual value is nearly, I believe, $500,000 now. So what we're dealing with here is the assessed value of 409,000 could very well mean over $600,000 in actual value. So let's put that in perspective, and that's the reality of the issue.
Through the chair, please.
So I needed to clarify that. I also want to thank Counselor Jackson, because he truly led this file through, and I want to commend him for his efforts. I think it's a remarkable motion, and I'm just saddened that I never thought of it. So I appreciate it, I appreciate his work. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson, last word. Oops, sorry.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Marilla, for your kind words. For those who are concerned that there'll be those that won't be captured, using the analogy of the seniors' tax rebate program, Mike, when we started it around amalgamation, if I recall, I was one of the ones that regularly talked to you and your predecessors, who were general managers of finance, saying that the income threshold started, seemed, if I recall, in the 2000s, very low. The market value assessment was very low, around maybe 200, 250. In other words, my point being, to some of my colleagues' concerns, that we weren't capturing enough people to benefit from the program who truly would need help from their local government to stay in their homes. Mike, after 17 years of the seniors' tax rebate program, has it not been fluid? Have you not increased the income threshold? Have you not increased the market value assessment, recognizing that we could capture, I think, now close to 4,000 eligible seniors across our city that are taking advantage of the seniors' rebate program? Madam Deputy Mayor, through to Mike for confirmation, please.
Mike?
Through the chair, that's correct, and Counselor Jackson is highlighting one of the principal changes that we made in the seniors' tax rebate program, was rather than having firm criteria, dollar amounts and income amounts, and then waiting every five years to amend them, was to peg them as a percentage of some other programs such as GIS. So that allows for annual refreshing of those criteria and ensures that we're continuing to provide that program to people of need or eligibility. So the counselor's correct, we have, just short, I believe, of 3,800 participants in 2017 with respect to the tax rebate program. And again, with both of these programs, the intention, staff's intention is not to reduce the number of individuals eligible, it's to create some consistency between the two programs, make it easier for property owners to navigate through the programs, refresh, as Vis pointed out, some outdated references in the seniors' tax rebate program, refresh those, and as well with respect to the deferral program, is to provide some more meaningful relief in terms of total deferral, total property tax deferral, rather than just the incremental increase.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mike. So I think, in summary, this is worthy of the launch today, and staff will take under review, continue to monitor if there's opportunities in fluidity to increase the threshold so that more seniors, more with, those with disabilities and low incomes can be captured in the program, to allow them to benefit and stay in their homes longer while protecting the city of Hamilton taxpayers across the board when the property is sold. Madam Deputy Mayor, I think on behalf of the seniors' advisory committee that has worked hard on this, and I also want to commend Maria DeSanto as well, I failed to mention her, she's been involved as well from finance throughout the whole process. My plea to my colleagues is to give this three-year pilot a chance. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and that exhausts our speakers list, so I need a mover and a seconder for 8.8 with direction that was given to staff. We should have a vote whether he should. Counselor Jackson, seconded by Counselor Conley, although in favor. Thank you. 8.9, stadium event booking function, is there any discussion regarding this item? Seeing none, may I? Oh, I keep forgetting that part. I'm doing the mum thing.
Why are you?
It's just bad habit. Go ahead, Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. To say that I'm disappointed in the timing and the lack of community engagement on this particular motion is an understatement. In the report, you'll see that this is a single-sourced, unsolicited proposal, single-sourced, no procurement, no community engagement on the stadium. We have a situation, Madam Deputy Mayor, where in my neighborhood, we sold this stadium and the ongoing construction and all the issues that are attached to it, as being an accessible community facility outward facing to the community. We have had considerable complications in dealing with the complexities of the TyCats being there, in terms of who can do what, where, when, and how. We've had long debates around this table around holding on to the key and being able to schedule. We had somebody who, I guess, didn't work out, and then got somebody else seconded, who perhaps isn't booking the way that it should. But I'd like to ask this committee, at least, at the very least, the lowest-level courtesy you can have to our community would be to table this till next GIC to allow some semblance of community engagement on this. In this report, there's absolutely none. So to go ahead and violate our own procurement policies in an unsolicited contract for 5,000 bucks a month with whatever ancillary savings and FTEs, I think is unconscionable until we hear from the residents of the community who are using this facility. You'll see, Madam Deputy Mayor, in the background, that Spectra has identified their interest in participating, oh, sorry, as a part of the proposed agreement and the overview of their proposal, again, unsolicited, sole-sourced, that they've committed to honoring existing relationships with the community groups. That doesn't go nearly far enough. Like, what about new community groups? There are so many amenities in this facility that have been untapped, and we're ready just to hand the keys over and walk away from a $150 million stadium that we put 40 million bucks into, after having gotten in short shrift on the TyCat deal. So I don't understand how we got to this place. I don't know who gave the direction to hand the keys over, or I don't know how we get to a place where a deal this big is considered without at least an open process in procurement. I'm baffled by it. It's a form of privatization that Bob Young was alluding to sometime last year, which lets me, leads me to believe that there's been these private discussions somewhere outside of the public view, and I think to not consult the community is unconscionable. So I'm asking kindly that we table this until the next GIC and allow at least the public to be aware of it, noting that this is the first real GIC coming back from the holidays. I feel like we have slipped this in without the public knowing, and I think I know from my community, they'll be absolutely outraged if you just hand the keys over, single-sourced, unsolicited contracts against all of our policy, to just hand the keys over to Spectra, which, by the way, you know, I'm not even clear at the end of their contract in December, whether or not we move forward with them at the Coliseum. So my hope would be that we would have that discussion about their role in First Ontario, open up a procurement process, if that's the direction that council wants to go, it's not my direction, to have a fair and open process that would allow bidders in this, rather than slipping it in over the holidays here, coming back on the first meeting without much public input and discussion, and just handing the keys over to our community bookings to Spectra. So that's my request out of courtesy, that folks allow this to be tabled into next GIC.
Thank you. I'm going to go through the speakers' list, and then I'll come back to you for that motion. Counselor Ferguson, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and first of all, I just want to congratulate John in Rome for trying to find a way to get the use of that stadium that we were looking for. I know that when we built it, we made sure we had the zoning that permitted concerts, and I think that Spectra Venue Management has done a good job with the First Ontario Coliseum, that they seem to be bringing in good talent. I'm not personally a concert person, but I hear from my constituents that they are bringing in some good talent, and they seem to have the relationships to be able to do that. I do have two concerns, though, and I want to, the first one is, when does the contract expire for Spectra?
John?
Through the chair, the five-year contract expires at the end of 2018, which is why we were suggesting that this should be just a pilot during the remaining, I'll say, 11 months of 2018.
Okay, and is there anything in the contract that allows for a renewal? And is there anything in the contract that allows for a renewal, like five years, another five years that could be negotiated, or are we putting this out for full procurement again in December 2018?
Through the Chair, it was originally designed to be a five-year plus a five-year option, and we've started both internally and with the existing proponents from very preliminary discussions, so that we'd be in a position early in the year to be able to come back to committee for some discussion around their performance and, you know, where it should go, et cetera.
So you haven't established a recommendation yet as to whether or not, through you, Madam Chairman?
Thank you.
You haven't established a potential recommendation, whether you exercise the five years or whether you go to public procurement? That'll happen through 2018, is that your answer?
Through the Chair, that's correct.
Okay. And so, I fully understand why it says pilot now to 2018. That makes a lot of sense, and you can test drive it and see how it goes. Will you be limiting, will you be changing any of the availability of that facility for community use as a result of doing the bookings through an outside agency rather than our own staff?
John?
Through the Chair. No, the intent really was to try to maximize the usage of the facility, primarily as a community facility. So in the discussions, if I can just expand briefly, that the discussions we've had with Spectra, and they've gone through the details of all of the bookings that we do have, so that they could recognize, I'll say, what they were getting into if this were to go forward, because the, I'll say, the main focus was to not only honor the existing, but to, Counselor Green's comment, to expand the use of the community, use of the facility, as well as to try to bring in extra events, et cetera, both on the field and in the various meeting rooms, et cetera, to maximize the use of it and the revenues that we would get as a city.
Okay, and I know the TyCats is interested in also bringing in concerts, but it hasn't, they've only had one, haven't they, or is it two, that, how many events does the TyCats run in there in the form of concerts?
Thank you, John.
I think, I'll pass it to Rome, I'd be guessing.
Well, are you looking it up? Do you want me to ask my next question?
No, no, just a minute, please, hang on. It's just technical here. Go ahead, Rome.
I got it.
I know you do.
Through the Chair, through the 20-year license agreement, the TyCats are allowed four incidental events over and above their TyCat games.
Can they do more if they want to?
Through the Chair, yes, they can. That would be a negotiated item through the city, and then it will kick into shared costs and shared revenues as well.
I don't know whether to direct the next question to you, Rome, or to the city manager, because I know the city manager was very much involved in the negotiating of the Tiger Cat licensing agreement or lease. And I remember it was a very, I'll say, spirited but contentious discussion about that lease and who has the scheduling rights, and it was a close, close vote, by one vote, to allow the Tiger Cats to have the scheduling rights. And I remember the example that was used during that debate was, well, can we ask the Tiger Cats to go practice somewhere else when Lady Gaga comes to town? I remember using Lady Gaga, probably not as popular today as she was back then, but if we're going to put a concert on there, can we, under the license agreement, actually ask the TyCats, similar to what every other CFL team does, to practice somewhere else, whether it's over to the Ron Joyce or to our new park at Dominion Glass?
Through the Chair, that would be a negotiated item. We would have to discuss that with the TyCats. It's really strategic in terms of the schedule and when they're bi-weeks. I think that's the biggest window of opportunity for us, is when they have a bi-week. There's a window from Thursday to Sunday allowing us to bring a big event such as Lady Gaga or any other big venue.
Okay, but Lady Gaga requires four or five days to set up, which means the practice would have to be moved somewhere else, because they do practice in there every day. Is that something we can do?
Through the Chair, those windows of opportunities are typically those bi-weeks, and we feel that it's feasible to do it during those. So it's very strategic. As soon as the schedule comes out, those are the windows and the slots that we would look at in bringing a big event.
Thank you, Counselor.
To you, Madam Chairman. Do TyCats have veto rights, though, in preventing those kinds of things from happening if they want to use the field for practice?
Rome or John?
Through the Chair, that would be a discussion item. We do have a mechanism through our FMT, which is our facility management, and if there's no resolution there, it would get bumped up to the city manager and to Scott Mitchell as a discussion item.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, and it hasn't happened yet, but if the city manager and Scott Mitchell can't agree, who wins?
Thank you. City Manager?
Through the Chair, we'd have to get legal advice on that particular question.
That's a good, safe answer. Okay, I just worry about this, Madam Chairman. I think it's a brilliant idea. I think that this company, this is what they do, they have tentacles out all over North America to the entertainers, and they can bring some big talent in there. But I'm deeply concerned about the license agreement we signed and what this may do in our ability to be able to bring in big-name talent, to be able to put on a show. I know the zoning is absolutely correct for it now, and so I'm fully prepared to support this today, and I heard the staff say that this won't affect the community use, they can still rent rooms if they so wish, but this is the big field itself, to allow our citizens to be entertained by high-name talent. That First Ontario Arena is too small to accommodate, and so I look forward to this moving forward, but I'm going to have my guard up on the TyCat lease. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Marilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need some clarification. First, just from the community use perspective, it's not just words. I presume it's going to be a binding contract that nothing is going to change from a community use perspective. Through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Rome or John?
Through the Chair, yes. We would be working, as we've indicated in the recommendations, we would work through a separate agreement for this standalone for the stadium with the full support of our legal services.
Thank you, Counselor.
It's fair to say, then, conclusively, that the community will see absolutely no change in access. The only change that we will see is the actual organization being changed or the global spectrum controlling the scheduling.
Thank you, John.
Yes, through the Chair, that would be correct, and if anything, the goal certainly is to grow that community usage, not to reduce it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Through you, Madam Chair. How would we write that into the contract? How do you expand upon the desire to grow the usage for the community?
John?
Through the Chair, you know, some detail certainly to be finalized in the agreement, but the premise is that any groups that currently exist, and those will be on the books, say, for 2016 and 17, those are considered existing clients, and so whatever are the rates and agreements that have been put in place for them would stay in place. There is a rate schedule for usage, and the goal of, from a Spectra point of view, is to grow the business so that they can grow their own commissions on it, right? So there'll be different tiers of opportunities, obviously. The reference to concerts is a trickier one for a variety of reasons, including the availability of the facility, the length of time in advance that you need to know that you've got an available timeframe allowed for a concert to be set up, et cetera. So the natural infill will be to really maximize the use through community groups and through small, you know, businesses, et cetera, to use the meeting rooms, the field to play, et cetera, all of which, if they were net new, then there would be motivation financially for the city and for Spectra to make that happen.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam Chair, I think everyone understands how I feel about the fact that we, as a city, shouldn't be in the entertainment business, and the fact that I sponsored the entire decommissioning of HECFIE and this whole privatization of operations of HECFIE being the COPS and Convention Center. At the time, I actually formally tried or attempted to get the stadium included as well, to no avail. So this has been, this, to me, is something I've already proposed and look forward to coming to fruition, and I think it's in the best interest of the community. And as long as the community groups are protected and they see absolutely no change, this is, the fact is, the focus is going to be to expand upon the community use, then I absolutely applaud what's before us, not to mention it's been consistent with what I've pursued in the past. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson?
And appreciate certainly the previous questions, and I guess I just want to elaborate on, through you, to Mr. Hattell. Spectra aware of the restrictions that they'll have to work around with regards to the TyCat games and everything else, correct?
Yes, through the Chair, that is correct. They've been fully apprised of the framework within which they must work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And reading the background information, we currently, we engaged a contract employee that's been doing what we're going to ask Spectra to do now, so it should be, there's no difference in it, we're just changing that body who's going to be doing the work. So I guess, was there engagement in the employee with the community in the past?
Thank you, John.
Yes, I'm going to let Rome answer that. It's the employee works for Rome's team.
Thank you. Thank you. Rome?
Through the Chair, that's a position that we don't have at the stadium. At the moment, we've seconded a person from our Facility Service Center to fill that role until we come to some sort of conclusion after today's meeting. So really, it's a position that's seconded, and the intentions are that that position goes back to her own base.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, but to that, thank you, Rome, for the clarification, but we never involved the community in that position being put in place and the details of what that employee is to do.
Through the Chair, no, this is an administrative function that is required for that stadium?
Right. Thank you very much. And to that, Madam Chair, I just want to comment, I'm fully supportive of this. I think it's a great way to go ahead. We wanted to see this facility used, and recognizing that the community is protected and certainly probably will be able to take better advantage because more will be available is a win-win, so I'm certainly supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Mayor?
Thank you very much. Thanks for the report, and I'll just say at the outset that I believe that we ceded far too much control to the Tiger Cats in the arrangement of the lease, but that's where we are. So giving where we are here today, you know, I'm hearing the comments around community use, and that's, when we define community on this one, we're talking about the entire City of Hamilton, are we not? I mean, every group in our entire city is able to or has access to the ability to get their hands on this facility for a particular use. Is that correct?
John or Rome?
Through the Chair, that is correct, Mr. Mayor, and in fact, a lot of, I'll say, different groups within the city, including our own revenue generation team, has used the facility for business meetings with our clients, et cetera. So it involves, I'll say, the sports or recreational-oriented community organizations, and then all the way through to local businesses, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
And I'll assume that your choice to go with Spectra, excuse me, is that because there are synergies in terms of facilities and how you kind of offset them and utilize them between different kinds of acts or abilities to get access to these facilities. So there are some synergies and some logic to taking an existing provider and saying, you know, add this to the portfolio, not unlike what Counselor Marilla said, which he originally intended to put this into the, kind of, the greater package of our entertainment facilities. So I assume there are some synergies associated with pulling them together.
Yes, through the Chair, the, I guess, a bit of the history of it was that through Council, we went through a very extensive process to select the group to operate our former HECFIE venues. Their business, as we'll investigate in more detail and bring back to committee later in the year, is one that has grown clearly. They have the linkages to all of the entertainment and sports providers, so their access and leveraging existing staff to dedicate to the stadium is the key. And the biggest difference is that, as Rome would describe, the role of the person in place is there to, I'll say, service the community by receiving requests. There has been no proactive approach to trying to bring additional business, if you will, to the stadium, and they have, they being Spectra, have agreed and committed that one of their more senior people on the marketing and sales side will be a fully dedicated person on site to provide not only the, I'll say, the proactive work at soliciting additional bookings, but also then to oversee the, I'll say, the customer care and make sure that the event runs smoothly in conjunction with the balance of Rome's team.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. And when it comes to setting the rates, so we, as a city, set the rates in terms of how people are going to pay for these facilities. It's not done by Spectra or anyone else, it's done by the City of Hamilton. Is that correct?
That is correct, through the Chair.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think, given all of those issues, I would support the direction that we're taking here, but, you know, I'm not adverse to tabling for a month to get, you know, public opinion on what their thoughts on this. I mean, if that's a desire to do, I'm okay with that. I mean, this is a citywide facility, and I think, you know, the public certainly has, you know, an opportunity to make comments on, you know, the direction that we might take on this, and so I see no harm in doing that. It delays the potential of this for a month, or less than. I mean, when is our next G.I.C.? When can I ask?
Through you to the Clerk.
Through you, Madam Chair. It's February the 7th.
I would say, you know, delaying this final decision until February the 7th to get public input, I think, I don't see harm in that. And, you know, and community-wide, I mean, I'm at, you know, and I appreciate the Counselor's advocating on his behalf of some groups in his community, and I would hope that we have programs in place that assist communities that may not be able to afford the full cost of the facility. Let me ask that question, actually. Are there programs in place to provide assistance for groups that may not have the resources to fully pay for? Are there programs in place to help and assist some that have a need?
Through the Chair, if you recall, on January 8th, I sent out an information update on the 2017 programming summary at Tim Hortons Field, and in the body of the report, we talk about four to five hours, two days per week, that recreation brings in services to the stadium at no cost. So we do provide those opportunities to the community, to the neighborhood.
Yeah, which I think is an important element. I mean, this is not to be forgotten, that it's also a local neighborhood resource that ought to be utilized to some degree for that purpose as well. So knowing that that's happening, I'm supportive, but getting some public input on this, I don't see any harm in. So if someone puts forward a notion to table this until the next G.I.C., February 7th, I'd be supporting that as well.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Yeah, I, first of all, when you look at the mission statement, I don't think any, whether strategic or even prudent approaches to addressing efficiencies in booking or whatever, you know, I don't have a problem with the concept. I have a problem with the fact that we build right into our mission statement engagement, and I don't think any fundamental change in the way we do things should be done in absence of the community being aware of it taking place. So I think the sticking point to me is that, it's not that I don't necessarily support the concept, but I don't believe we should be changing something fundamentally without allowing a community have input into the process, and that is consistent with our mission statement. So I would be supporting the tabling motion only for that reason. We need to have that engagement, and we need to understand if we have to build things into this arrangement based on that engagement. The next question I have is, because the concept I understand, and I just don't know what tweaking might need to be done through that engagement, and we'll have to, I don't want to prejudge the engagement, we have to get that feedback, but I would hope, understanding that the contract is ending in 2018 with Spectra, is it Spectra? Right. That, and this argument about sole sourcing, I mean, I would hope that we would contemplate building in that tender or the renewal or whatever decision is made, if we go to a procurement, again, a competitive procurement for the COPS Coliseum, for example, that it builds, it anticipates the arrangement at the stadium. So now you are going through a competitive process because you're building it in to all the activities at COPS Coliseum, because, I mean, at the end of the day, COPS Coliseum is also a city facility, and there is a climate of scale, and you're dealing with an organization that is booking community groups at COPS Coliseum as well. I mean, COPS Coliseum is no different than the stadium from my perspective in regards to, it's a community facility, it's there for the community to use when there isn't private-sector concerts and those kinds of things, or, you know, the Bulldogs, et cetera, and you build around that. So the concept-- So the concept and the principles are no different. So I would love to see, after this engagement and whatever tweaking we need to contemplate, that we actually build the, if we go to procurement, that we build in the Everwin Stadium to that procurement on Kopps Coliseum. So is that one of the things that's been anticipated through the chair?
Thank you.
Yes, through the chair, absolutely. We see this opportunity as the pilot to try to, by the time we're discussing around the table about the potential renewal or not of the contracts, both with the convention center and with the other entertainment venues. We would hopefully have a flavor for how successful this pilot may be or not. And we've tried to anticipate that if, through discussion, we feel it's too early to make that decision, then we would carry it on as a pilot to end at the year-end, and then a separate consideration being given further down the road to how we would best integrate that into a procurement process.
I appreciate that. And again, I'm not prejudging the performance of Spectra one way or the other. I think we need to see that report when we consider it at the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker I have is Councillor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate all that I've heard thus far. I had an opportunity to speak to Scott Radley last night on ML about this, and had me, in advance of that interview, really looking closely at the report. One of the first things I wanted to ensure, those who may have listened to that interview, was that we weren't going to wane but try to improve the community use. And we reviewed the 11. Through you to Rome, was it 1,100 hours of community use last year or greater in your January 8th report?
So through the chair, it was 1,110 field bookings, but we convert that to hours. So the available hours is 28,700 hours, and we've used 15,600, which is 54% utilization. So there's the opportunity to improve on our numbers?
Okay. And so the pledge from Spectra in this report, through you, Mr. Mayor, is at least three new mid-to-large concerts, and that in no way detracts from the bookings that they are currently bringing to First Ontario Centre. Through you?
So through the chair, it's John. That's correct. And because of the timing of this, as you know, in the industry, it does require a bit of a runway to book all entertainment acts. So they've committed to three events. It could be film shoot, could be a sporting event, could be a small to medium-sized concert.
Okay. And so, well, you've mentioned it, so through you quickly, John, would tabling until early February GIC affect any of this potential mid-to-large venue booking?
Through the chair, I would say potentially it does impact their ability to do it. So if we went to GIC on February the 7th, then it would become, I guess, official with council the following week, and then presumably this would be effective then, say, the 1st of March versus the 1st of April. So it does, you know, pull back to some degree their ability to make those proactive calls for booking, knowing, especially for the larger events, that you need to have a longer runway than a couple of months. But is it feasible? Absolutely. And if in the, if on balance, that's what direction we would take, we would certainly make the best of it.
Thank you, councillor.
And the report indicates, I can't remember, I think it was page three, but near the bottom, that when you come back, it was midterm, so somewhere in the summer, you're going to come back, and we're going to have an opportunity, obviously in camera, to review the five-year contract that exists now with Spectra, formerly Global Spectrum. And at that same time, can you confirm that we, if we were to move forward with this particular pilot, which would turn from an 11-month to a 10-month, I guess, or something to that effect, at that same time, we'll be able to review the progress they're making within this pilot period on the Tim Hortons Field bookings? Through you.
John?
Yes, through the chair, the intent would be to do exactly that, councillor, and have as much available data as we have or we would have at the time. One of the things that we would anticipate is that by the nature of it, there would be confirmed bookings also for 2019 at that time because of the lead time required. So although it would be only, I'll say, a few months down the road from now, we should be able to get an indication as to the prospects at least in some of the confirmed bookings for 18 as well as prospects for 19.
Have the TyCats been part of the discussion leading to today's report? Through you?
I'll defer to Rome, but I know that he did inform Scott Mitchell.
Rome?
Through the chair, I did inform Scott Mitchell and the TyCat organization that we're going down this path as well. We just received, I think it was a week ago, the dates that they want to book into the stadium. Their schedule shows that there's going to be three bye weeks in this CFL season, and we want to make sure we take opportunity of one of those bye weeks and allow Spectra or whoever takes on this role to optimize that time or that slot.
Thank you, councillor.
So this recent schedule sent by the TyCats to us, does that just cover the football operations? Or, I mean, knowing that they brought Keith Urban and worked with Supercall Productions on the Billy Talent Shows in the last few years, does it also include any events outside of football?
Through the chair, they've tentatively blocked. They're working on deals out there. We're not sure. They haven't confirmed who's coming or what event's coming, but they tentatively blocked all those bye weeks.
All of the bye weeks?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Oh, so we're working to get one of those three bye weeks you mentioned just now and give them the other two through you, Chair?
Through the chair, that's what we're working on. It's a discussion item on our agenda for our FMT meeting scheduled later this month.
Oh, then it might help to have this deferred. We'll see. I got one more, just through you, Chair. The engagement between now and then, this February GIC, if we table till then, should and I'm sure will include giving all local groups an opportunity to get some peace of mind, that we seek not to just status quo, but grow that community use. We were only at 54%, as Rome has just indicated or John has just indicated. And with that, by having booking staff, one individual who's on contract with the city now, handle that work. This pilot hands that off and gives it to Spectra over 11 months, according to the report, and at a revenue gain of 45K. But I wonder, it may also include those folks out there, and I referenced one local group already, mid-to-large size concert promoters or people who manage these sorts of things outside of Spectra. In the interim, if those folks also come forward, if we're going to engage the public, they may be part of the engagement, what do we tell them through you?
John or Rome?
If they think they could do as good or better of a job that's being presented here today?
Through the chair, certainly we would think if the decision of committee is to go forward with community engagement, it would absolutely include those groups. I know that the existing Spectra team has a close relationship with the music community in general and the promoters specifically, and have done a lot of collaborative work. My speculation would be that as another group within the city that puts on events and that, they would probably enjoy the fact that they, you know, could work with someone in the industry to bring more business in and in a sense be collaborating and partnering on various events. Certainly, that's been the Spectra approach today.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor.
So I'll appreciate the tabling and know that we'll have probably at Tim Hortons Field, a good session of community engagement that will include anyone and everyone from the community that wants to start booking or wants to be reassured that whatever they have been booking in the past may be maintained, and that we look to enhance those community bookings with what's before us today. But also provides an opportunity that maybe others didn't even know about until today. So there's an advantage of actually tabling that are in the concert booking for mid-to-large size concert business, also an opportunity to engage. So I'll support Councillor Green's tabling, and I appreciate staff's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhausts first-time speakers. We're on to second-time speakers. Councillor Green?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we table this to the next GIC, seconded by Councillor Whitehead.
Thank you. The motion is on the table. Any questions about the tabling?
I do have a caveat on that, is I want to make sure that all existing groups, and here's the caveat, because there's many groups who aren't existing at the moment and be excluded from this, be notified, and that appropriate public communication for whatever town hall or community consult we're going to host be provided so that folks know that this is actually happening.
So the tabling is to February the 7th, from what we heard from the clerk? Any discussion on the tabling? Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Through you to Rome. Rome, what are the bye weeks?
We're on the tabling motion right now. Is this a question about the tabling?
No, I know I'm on the tabling motion. It's about the tabling motion. It'll come to it.
Let's find out if it is.
I have the floor, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Let's find out if it is. Rome? It's okay. Let's find out.
Through the chair, there's three bye weeks. One's in early July, early August, and October.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I tabling this, are we at risk with the early July date? Because I know these entertainments, they book weeks out in advance, if not months.
Just questions. Thank you. Rome?
Through the chair, we're taking this up at our FMT meeting with the TyCats to have that conversation. Right now, they tentatively have all three of those bye weeks booked. The city is really pushing to get one of those summer bye weeks.
Okay, thank you.
One last question, Rome. The, why is it just bye weeks? Why can't we do the away games too when the stadium is available?
Okay, so we're on the tabling motion right now. So this is about the tabling to February the 7th.
All I'm trying to get my head around is what are we going to lose by delaying this a month?
So, Rome, I think the question should be, are we losing any weeks because of the tabling?
Through the chair, at this point, we're working in booking that stadium with the person that we have in that position. So it's status quo. So a couple of weeks, I think we can afford to the February 7th and do the community engagement.
Thank you. So we're not going to lose anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't hear that, but I-
That's fine. I just want to make sure that the questions are about the tabling. So the tabling is on the table. Tabling's on the table. All those in favor for tabling? Any opposed? So Councillor Conley, Councillor Pearson, Councillor Ferguson, opposed. It carries, and I have a question from Councillor Green.
Are we going to be using the procedural bylaws to govern these meetings moving forward?
If it helps a person decide whether to table something, I will allow those questions.
Then it's not, then you can't debate a tabling motion. All those questions were inappropriate, and what's worse, Madam Chair, is they were already asked by the previous speaker. So if somebody was paying attention, they would have gotten all of those questions.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you. So that carries. We're on to 8.10. Councillor Skelly, you have a motion, please, respecting 8.10.
I have a motion.
Well, you have a motion. So do you want to put the motion on the table, and then we can ask questions regarding Before you introduce your motion?
Yes.
Then I would have to come back to you because you'd be speaking to it. Clerk?
Through you, Madam Chair. Councillor Skelly, I'm not sure your microphone is on because I really had a hard time hearing you. You may speak, have to speak closer.
That's my problem.
No, it's on. Sorry. However, even if you introduce a motion, it is only practice that you can't speak to it. There is no, nothing in the bylaw that says you aren't permitted to do so.
Okay. So Councillor Skelly, I've got you first on the list.
My question is regarding 3.1 on 8.10, and it's regarding the funding for the bus shelters and the art, for bus shelters, and just clarification on the source of the funding.
Good morning. Can you please introduce yourself for the new system?
Good morning, Tanya Detmar. I'm with the HSR in the Transit Strategy Section. Good morning, I'm Tanya Detmar. I'm with the HSR in the Transit Strategy and, or, sorry, Transit Planning and Infrastructure Section.
I believe the question was, what is the source of funding for this public art that is mentioned in 8.10? Tanya?
The source of the funding is the QuickWinds money that we received in 2008.
Councillor Skelly? Sorry, can you repeat that?
The source of the funding is from the QuickWinds funds that we received in 2008 from the Province of Ontario.
Through the chair, is that through Metrolinks?
I believe what is now through the early days of Metrolinks, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Skelly? Through the chair, was that for all five shelters?
Through the chair, the project that we're funding, the public art, is through the A and B Line Amenities Project, and that is, the public art is a portion of that, which includes enhanced shelters. I'm not, I think it's greater than five because there were some at Mohawk College also.
Thank you, councillor.
Through the chair, I have, can that funding be used for anything other than art?
Thank you.
Through the chair, the intent of the funding globally as it came in was to prepare the city to become rapid-ready. The public art portion was a project of the overall funding. We funded buses, the Mohawk College Terminal, the Park and Ride at the Mountain Transit Center, and various other projects. And A and B Line Amenities was another project. So the funding does have to be used on the A and B lines within that project scope. I know it's a little bit.
Thank you, through the chair, but does it have to be used for art?
No, through the chair, it does not have to specifically be used for art. It can be reallocated back to the general account.
Thank you, councillor.
Through the chair, I have such deep appreciation for public art, but in light of the fact that we had such a cold winter, and regardless, actually, of the season, the need for bus shelters is far greater than the need for pretty bus shelters. And I think that I would feel very uncomfortable spending, even if it's only $50,000, that is $10,000 on a bus shelter that costs $7,500 to erect, $10,000 on artwork to me is just, is not acceptable. And I would much prefer to see that funding diverted to creating, constructing bus shelters as opposed to beautifying existing shelters. So those are my comments. And my motion doesn't speak to that. It simply asks for reconsideration. I'm not sure if that's actually spelled out in what I'm suggesting now, but I really do not think we should be spending any money on improving the aesthetic of a bus shelter when we're in need of bus shelters itself. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Wait a minute, sorry. Press, next.
We're good. Thank you. And I want to thank our staff for a great report. And, you know, what's a public art is, in my mind, and requires a master plan, and it's a very, very fundamental part of ensuring that we have an interesting, dynamic, and attractive city, and that makes for interesting public realm spaces. And I think this report speaks to that. So I'm very supportive of the report and the work that's being done and the enhancements that have been made over the last years has been, I think, quite dramatic in all parts of our city, and I really do appreciate the great effort that's being put into this. Having said that, I had some questions around the motion and understanding that this is Metrolinks funding to enhance, I guess, the public transit experience. And so, you know, to the question that Councillor Skelly asked, this is general Metrolinks funding for QuickWinds going back to, I think, almost 2009 or 2008, something like that. That was offered to municipalities to enhance the public transit experience. So given that, and given the comments that I've heard, you know, is the public art portion the highest priority for transit as opposed to, you know, shelters that also cost money and are also very valuable in terms of enhancing the public transit experience? So not sure who I'm asking at this point, because I appreciate that our public art staff are following through on direction given to them to provide, you know, amenity or at least an interesting public realm space around bus shelters. So am I asking- So am I asking anyone else in terms of?
I think they're getting Kohl's notes from Ms. Bradford, so we'll just wait a second. Tanya?
Through the chair, and I apologize while I was getting the Kohl's notes. I didn't get the full question.
That's what I suspected. Can you please re-
So the question is, you know, can we consider, I'm not sure we need to reconsider because we haven't really considered it yet, consider the other possible uses for those funds beyond public art? I think that's essentially the question. I don't think that's a bad thing to do, given the circumstance. And it may end up that we end up back to public art again as an enhancement that, you know, makes most sense. But can we, at this point, set these aside and, you know, have another look at how we utilize those funds going forward?
Thank you, Tanya.
Through the chair, yes, we can set them aside so long as they are used within, along the A-line route.
Right. So, you know, the motion kind of reads reconsider the bus shelter idea. I mean, I would support a motion that suggests that we separate these five items out, have another look at, you know, whether other potential uses might enhance the public realm and transit experience, and maybe have some of those options come back to us, you know, down the road. But, you know, I think the report in itself, I think, is a very positive report. And I think it really speaks to, you know, some very, very good effort to enhance our city. And I think the evidence of that is being seen throughout our city, that people are enormously proud to see, you know, the public realm enhancements that we're getting through the public art process. So if Counselor Skelly would, you know, amend her motion to suggest that we just lift these out, have a look at other possible options that this money could be used for in the A and B line, I'd be happy to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Yeah, I congratulate the mayor. I was concerned that there's going to be an endorsement of spending $10,000 of taxpayers' money on art on a $7,000 shelter, which, I mean, I don't think the taxpayers would be, we appreciate art, but we also appreciate the fact that we have a poverty rate that isn't going down in the city of Hamilton. And we also appreciate the fact that we have a challenged transit system. We also appreciate the fact that we have many areas in the city that do not even have a bus shelter. And yet, we want to spend $10,000 of MetroLinks dollars that could be allocated to a particular area for enhancing the transit experience. So I'm not against the art piece. I just thought from a proportion point of view, it just didn't make sense. Because there's got to be some proportionality when you approach these types of projects. So I love the suggestion the mayor's put forward. I think, I don't know what the, all the levels of deficiencies these are, or if there's other ways of, you know, increasing the experience of people in bus shelters. I mean, if you want to spend that kind of money, maybe we might consider a way of warming up some of those shelters in the wintertime to, again, enhance the experience of people waiting for those buses or the LRT in the wintertime versus putting up an art piece, because I don't think the art piece can be all that warming in a cold winter day. So I'd rather truly impact the rider experience and enhance it in a way that encourages more to get on the transit system than a piece of art in a shelter. So I look forward to a report that comes back and looks at other ways we can enhance that experience, meet the deficiencies, and improve the ridership along those quarters.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Partridge, Counselor Pearson, and myself on the list. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And just a couple of questions, if I may. These shelters are existing, is that correct?
Tanya?
Through the chair, yes, they are. They've been recently constructed through 2017 and a portion of 2016.
Okay, thank you.
They are the larger enhanced shelters.
All right, thank you. And Madam Chair?
Just a minute, please, Counselor. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, Tanya, the $10,000, is that $2,000 per shelter, basically what we're looking at? Or is it $10,000 for each shelter?
Tanya?
Through the chair, if I could just add a little bit of clarity, the shelters that we're talking about are the larger enhanced shelters. You'll see them along only B-line and A-line stops.
Right.
In the east, we'd have them at Queenston, at Parkdale, and on the mountain, we have them at Rhyma, at Upper James. The shelters are $50,000. They are not the standard smaller shelter that are $7,000. So, and to answer the Counselor's question, it would be $10,000 per location.
Okay, so that's $10,000 on top of the $7,000 cost of each shelter approximately, for the larger ones, or are they more?
Through the chair, the larger shelters are $50,000.
To construct them? $50,000 to construct, okay. And then $10,000 for the art.
Through the chair, that's correct.
All right. Thank you. And they're all constructed at this point?
Through the chair, we have a few balanced shelters that are being constructed. Hunterville is one of them.
Okay. And Madam Chair, just my last question. This is a master plan that we're talking about, so it's fluid. It's a master plan to give us a direction to go in through you, Madam Chair. Ken?
Wait a minute, please, Ken. You need to put, wait, thank you, there's a delay.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, it is a master plan. There are other projects that can be slotted in to replace this.
Okay. And I think that's important, because what we, you know, what every department needs and every division needs is a master plan, which is like a roadmap of where you're going and what projects you're going to be looking at doing. So that's fine. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson, and then myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly appreciate Tanya's information, but we ought to remember, I'm not wanting to shoot the messenger, this was for the A-line and B-line only, so staff are going to come back with other options that we can use this money for. Does it still have to be on the A-line and B-line?
Tanya?
Through the chair, the $50,000, we have about five or six different projects under the QuickWinds funding envelope. The $50,000 is assigned to the A and B line amenities project. We can transfer that $50,000 back to the general pot and, you know, look at, we're pretty much through, it's been a 10-year program, we're pretty much through most of our projects, but we do have a balance of projects that we are looking at. We can reallocate it to those projects. And so it doesn't specifically have to be on the A-line. The B-line, we're not really given the LRT status. We're not looking at enhancing, putting any enhancements along the B-line. So it would be any enhancements along the A-line or back into the general kitty.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I don't have a problem with sending that back and looking at it, but I can say the new, the bus shelters that have been installed, the new ones in the last year and a half, two years, along the Queenston route at Parkdale and at Nash are absolutely beautiful. Lots of gray area, concrete area, large shelters lit. So there's been a lot, we've come a long way with our shelters, so thank you for that.
Thank you. So now, I would like to turn the chair over to the mayor before I go to second-time Speaker, Counselor Skelly. And this is more of a comment. And when I heard A-line, B-line, A-line always goes all the way up to the airport. We do not have shelters along that route. In fact, if you travel along that route, you'll see someone has made a homemade bench. Another spot, you'll see somebody took a bucket and turned it upside down. So if we can put this money into constructing the shelters, especially along Highway 6, this is, there's no protection around. It's a wind tunnel at the best of times. So to me, it makes more sense to reallocate the money into building shelters where shelters need to be. And Ken, you and your group do an amazing job. This is no indication against public art. It really is to get the basic needs in, and then we'll pretty them up later. Because right now, we definitely need them, especially along Highway 6 all the way to the airport. And we have our transport, our transit terminal is on Highway 6, so a lot of people are getting there to switch over buses. So it's becoming more and more busy every day. People in Mount Hope need to have the transit shelters to come back. So with all due respect, I think that reallocating the money into building new shelters where shelters need to go, especially on the A-line, I'm 100% behind that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take the-
When you flip the chair open-
And I screwed up, sorry.
It's all good.
Okay. So now I go back to Counselor Skelly, second-time Speaker. Go ahead.
And Counsel, Madam Chair, I'm asking for your direction on this. I have somewhat of an amendment to the revised motion.
Okay.
And I'll read it. It is as follows, that staff be directed to reallocate the QuickWin funding, QuickWinds funding that is currently set aside for public art and bus shelters as outlined in Report PED 17211, respecting Public Art Master Plan 2016 Annual Update, to be used to construct additional bus shelters where required throughout the city along the A-line.
Okay, does everybody have that? I still believe I'm seconding that?
And you are seconding it.
Yep. Okay. Any questions for this amendment? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So, you know, I would hope that we kind of leave the door open to other options that enhance the transit experience. So, I mean, I understand the kind of the shelter idea, and that makes some sense, but I don't want to have the hands tied of our staff to look at other options that might be more beneficial as well. So rather than, you know, just saying, take the money and use it for bus shelters, can we open the, can we amend it to suggest that staff come back with some options, one of which would be the bus shelter idea? I just don't want to, I don't want to miss an opportunity to enhance it in other ways that we may not be seeing right now, that our staff might come back to us with creatively. So it may end up being bus shelter, and that's fine, but let's not tie their hands to look at other options that might be even more beneficial. So if we could leave that open, that would help me support the motion.
And I got a nod from the mover, and I'm also in agreement. So it's to look at other bus enhancements, not specific to just shelters, but it may include shelters. Thank you, Counselor Whitehead.
Again, consistent with my thought about increasing, improving on the experience, I've been in areas in the country where on the bus shelters in locations that are either the starting point of a destination or an ending point of a destination where you get a lot more people queued in those particular locations, those shelters should be enhanced. And what I mean by that is, at the very least, we should consider, and I wasn't joking, and I'm not talking about a full-fledged heater, but something that just could drop the, when we have those very cold, cold days, it just drops just a couple of degrees, whether it's solar or whatever means they can achieve. Because one of the complaints I got from a senior recently in such a location was the fact that she doesn't want to take the bus because she can't tolerate the cold waiting in the location that she was waiting in. And so that just twigged. I said, I know we can't heat every shelter, and I don't expect to, although I would hope that through design, we can improve on using the solar energy to lower the temperatures within the shelter. But I would hope that on improving the experience, that we could also look at those endpoints, beginning points of major lines like the A-line, where more people congregate to ensure that, again, that experience of waiting at those particular locations is a good one.
Thank you, Counselor Green.
Thank you very much. And I'm very happy and encouraged to hear all this talk about improving the rider experience in different parts across the city. And I hope that all Councilors around this table take that same spirit into the 2018 operating budget. There are lots of opportunities for us to put bus shelters across the ward if we adequately support them at the appropriate time during budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion as amended is on the floor. All those in favor? Thank you. 8.10 as amended. Thank you. We're on to 8.11. This is the Facility Naming Subcommittee Report 17-007. And I need an approval. Do we do them separately, Clerk, or the entire report?
Through you, Madam Chair. You can do-
Okay, so I'm hearing somebody would like to do this separately. Thank you. So I have a speaker's list. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So I'm, sorry, we're doing these one at a time, and I support them all. I think they're all positive initiatives, and they're very good. I just had some questions on the outstanding information and business list. And it names two things that I think we've since dealt with, or one of them for sure, which is the acknowledging Mayor Armoreau, which we've now landed on the forecourt at the city of Hamilton as opposed to Pier 4. So I imagine that this could be removed from the outstanding business list. And secondly, the not understanding where we've gotten to with the recognition of Frank Cook as part of the, I thought we were looking at the bus terminal downtown quite some time ago, and I see now that this has been referred to the LRT project team. So this is a request that came in, I believe, in 2016, maybe 2017. And here we are in 2018, and we have not yet got resolve on this issue. So I'm just curious to know what the status of that is and why it's now been referred to the LRT project team.
Who would like to answer that? Mr. Thorne?
Yes, so through the chair. I apologize. I don't know the status of that one, so I'm going to have to look into that with the LRT team, and I can follow up.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, but there is a governance subcommittee, so I mean, who's chairing the governance subcommittee? How did, so this request was made probably two years ago, maybe even longer, to have that considered, and it as yet hasn't been considered, other than flipped over to LRT Subcommittee. So can I ask why it's not being considered as a naming opportunity as opposed to being shuffled to someone else?
Counselor Pearson, can you put the request in, please? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. And I know there has been discussion at the table at Facilities Naming Subcommittee, and I believe there were some concerns with the family as far as the naming. They were looking at the McNabb Terminal, and then there was a location with the LRT hub at the Traffic Circle. Well, that has changed now. I'd like to, if I could, Madam Chair, direct Jennifer DiDomenico to just clarify, but that's why there's issues on the table.
Good morning, Jennifer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee. Yes, Counselor Pearson is correct. From what I understood from the LRT office, there was a question around the final ownership of the transit hub and facility. And until that was confirmed, they weren't sure that we could finalize the naming of the building if the municipality doesn't ultimately own it. So we would have to go to the province as a recommendation. But I believe we could follow up with the LRT office to see further along, once we have that confirmed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
So we're talking about the Traffic Circle potential facility, which is no longer on the table. It's off the table. So, I mean, I guess my question is, you know, typically, I try to follow process and not bring, you know, absolutes to committee and council. We did with the Armoreau piece. Do I need to bring a motion forward directly to name the McNabb Street Bus Terminal, the Frank Cook Bus Terminal? Or should I kind of now expect that the governance subcommittee will, or the naming subcommittee will now look at this and determine whether this is now a viable opportunity, given the circumstances that we're in now?
Counselor Pearson, I need you to put the request in. Sorry. You took it off.
Facility naming, yeah, my apologies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the mayor's questions, certainly, and information. I certainly would appreciate the opportunity, and I think committee members would, and staff, to have this come back to facilities naming, that we can deal with it appropriately in light of all of the scenarios that have factored into why we're still having this outstanding.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
And so, just last question, the next naming facilities Subcommittee meeting is? Do we know? Does it state here when the next meeting is expected, or is it at the call of the chair?
It's generally at the call of the chair, but we can arrange something in the next while.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. I mean, I still want to, you know, this has been around for a while, and you know, we should decide one way or the other. It's probably not fair to the family, who I know are interested in, you know, they've been approached, in fact, about this kind of acknowledgement, and it's just been dangling for a couple of years. So if we could get to this and resolve this one way or the other, that'd be appreciated. So thank you, thank you for the effort and the questions and the answers. And I look forward to hearing more about that final resolve. And I appreciate the report. These are namings that all make sense for individuals that have made some significant contributions to our community, and I certainly support them all.
Okay, thank you. I know I said we did these one at a time, but we don't have to. So Counselor Jackson, I believe you're going to be speaking to number two.
Yeah, Madam DePerey. Were there other speakers that were speaking specifically to the mayors? Because I'm willing to hold off.
Okay, so I'll need you to put your request back in, please. And Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think we need to go through a due process, and I'd love to have the community involved in this process to a great degree, because we're going to start recognizing former employees for the City of Hamilton, and I got a whole list we can put forward, and I don't know where the line gets drawn anymore. So, I think the discussion's worth having, but to make an assumption is probably the wrong, the way to go. I sit on the Facility Planning Committee, and the approaches we have to take in regards to the community engagement and support and all those kinds of things. It, and you know, and most of the names on the list, I'm very supportive, but there's got to be a threshold, and if you don't meet sort of a threshold, then I think you demean all those that you're actually recognizing. It doesn't mean these people aren't good people, but there needs to be a threshold. And if we're just going to start recognizing former staff people, then that's a whole different threshold that we need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson, final speaker. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And yes, to Item 2 and 3, although both facilities technically in Ward 7, obviously, they service the entire mountain community. And Item 2 will be the official renaming of the Fireside Lounge at Sackville Hill after the late, great Bella Brerly, who passed away earlier last year at the age of 108, one of the ones who spearheaded the actual building of the Sackville Hills Senior Center. I'm very proud of that. Thank you to the Facility Naming Subcommittee for that unanimous decision. And Item 3, I was very familiar with Daryl Villanueva, and at the Bill Friday Law Field Arena, that was named about a year ago, the entire arena after the great referee Bill Friday. Now, the Community Room is going to be named after Daryl Villanueva, who sadly passed away in the last year and a half, way too prematurely, has left a son behind, and was hockey volunteer extraordinaire across the minor hockey community, specifically at the Law Field Community Room. And I'm very grateful that the naming of that Community Room will be after his legacy of Daryl Villanueva. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. That, Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to also speak about Melissa Tenquitty. She's a homegrown girl, started playing soccer at the age of four in high school, played track and soccer, and was named the Soccer MVP and Athlete of the Year in her senior year. She's a three-time Olympian and two-time bronze medal winner, and she was Canada's second-leading scorer in the 2012 Olympics. So, I'm, she was nominated by Ann Castor Soccer, and I'm very pleased to support this to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the report and all of the recommendations that are in this morning.
And it's seconded by Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you. We're now open for business. Oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor? Hang on.
Just to cover off the, the one amendment, am I going to assume that, that it removes the naming option, renaming of Pier 4 Park as part of the outstanding businesses? Am I assuming that that's going to be removed? Or do we need a motion to do that?
Thank you, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Through you, Madam Chair. I did take it, and it will be added as Item 5.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're still on, I'll just do this one more time. 8.11, all those in favor? Thank you. We're on to 8.12, open for business. Mover and a seconder, any discussion? Counselor Pearson, oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm getting used to this. Counselor Green.
I just have a motion that I'm, I'm going to move to step down from that committee, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins.
So, it's moved by yourself, seconded by Counselor Collins, that you will be taken off the list for the open for business. All those in favor? Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Remember the terms.
Wait, please. Just a delay.
I don't remember the terms or references. Does that mean now we have to fill that vacancy on the open for business? And if the vacancy needs to be filled, should we not do it now? So, can I ask through the clerk?
Madam Clerk.
Through you, Madam Chair. I will have to take a look at that and get back to you.
But it's safe to assume that we would be in good, good position to fill, since we have somebody, a counselor moving himself off that committee, to replace him if there's an opportunity right now to do that, there wouldn't be a problem with that, right?
Yes, you could.
Okay. So, I would move Counselor Doug Connolly to sit on the open for business committee?
Counselor Connolly, are you all right with that? Thank you. Counselor Pearson seconding it for Counselor Connolly to be on the open for business for the rest of this term. All those in favor?
Gary.
Thank you. So, 8.12, open for business Subcommittee report. May I have a mover and a seconder? I believe I did that. Counselor Pearson, and I had Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor? Thank you. We have affordable housing site. If the committee wishes to discuss private confidential Appendix A to Item 8.13, we will require a motion to defer this matter to open-closed session portion of the meeting. I, if I can move the, if I can move the chair to the, to the mayor, please. I would like to, of some portions of this, I would like to go in camera with this. I have some serious concerns of at least one property. So, Counsel, Mr. Mayor.
I suggest that we probably need to defer Item 8.13 until we have dealt with that in camera. So, a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Whitehead, seconded by Ferguson. All in favor? Gary, thank you. Chair, it's back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, that's 8.14, permanent closure and sale of a portion of road allowance between Lime Ridge Road East and Lincoln Alexander Parkway, Ward 7. What is the wish of the committee? Hang on a second. I should be following my roadmap, shouldn't I? If the committee wishes to discuss this in private confidential, we need to raise that now. If not, we can move it in open session. Thank you. So, we've got Ward 7 Counselor, Counselor Skelly, Counselor Connolly seconding it. All those in favor? Thank you. 8.15, Board of Governors report for November the 29th. I need a mover and a seconder, please. This is to, I believe it's to receive. Thank you. Counselor Partridge, Counselor, oh, sorry, Adam.
Through you, Madam Chair. It's actually not to receive. There are recommendations.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, this is to approve. Counselor Partridge and, I need a seconder, please. Counselor Pearson, all those in favor? Thank you. Item 9.1 in your agenda is not supposed to be there, so we skip over that. It was dealt with at PW. Item 10.1, Counselor Skelly, would you like to please introduce your notice of motion? Can you please put the request? Hang on, please. Thank you.
It is a notice of motion. It's before you, and I would like it to remain a notice of motion. And I would also like to invite, encourage any sort of creative addendums to this particular or amendments to this particular motion. I think that I've witnessed, and we've all witnessed, very lengthy, very lengthy meetings in the last couple of years, and especially when we have contentious issues such as the LRT. And this motion does not discourage ongoing dialogue. In fact, it doesn't prevent anyone from engaging in a, in a conversation with either staff or, or a presenter beyond the five limit, five-minute limit. What I'm simply trying to do is encourage my colleagues to articulate a comment or express and, and state a question under the five-minute mark, and I think that that's more than reasonable. And I'm hoping that we can. Do we want to discuss this now?
Counselor Skelly, do you want to waive the rules for your own motion?
It's before you, and as I said, this is really more to encourage dialogue, to talk about how we can address these incredibly lengthy meetings that we've all experienced in the past couple of years. And I think sticking to five minutes to ask a question or make a statement is beyond reasonable. It's more than reasonable. It doesn't prevent ongoing dialogue, but it just encourages us to be a little bit more respectful of the time constraints, because it's costing taxpayers a tremendous amount of money when we sit here and we tie up staff.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk. I'm just wanting to clarify, because we're getting into discussion on the notice of motion.
Of waive the rules.
Are we waiving the rules?
That's what I'm just coming back to. Can we please? Counselor Skelly, are you willing to waive the rules on your own motion? Counselor Whitehead, I'm asking Counselor Skelly a question.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Are you willing to waive the rules on your own motion? Thank you. And it's seconded by Counselor Marula. Waive the rules. All those in favor? Thank you. Now, Counselor Skelly. I think you've already introduced your motion.
Just to clarify, it does not prevent an ongoing dialogue, but it includes one's effort to articulate a statement, argue their position, and/or ask a question within one statement. In other words, the five minutes does not apply to an ongoing dialogue. It is simply trying to encourage people to articulate what they're trying to say within that five minutes.
Thank you. So, I have a speaker's list. Counselor Farr.
Okay. I think my question may have just been answered by the mover, but I will ask just to be sure. I just thought I heard that through you, Chair, to the mover, that it does not detract from an ongoing dialogue. Part A, Counselor Skelly says that it is a five-minute time limit when asking a question.
Thank you.
So, oftentimes, when we have the floor, any one of us, and we have more, we have oftentimes more than a question, we have more than one question. So, is that what you mean when you are talking about it doesn't prevent ongoing dialogue? It doesn't prevent more than one question?
So, would you please put the request in? I can include you into the conversation. Thank you, Counselor Skelly.
My response to you is yes. It only refers to one comment and/or one question. You can engage and go 34 minutes, 50 minutes, two hours, 17 hours with whomever, but often we make comments and/or ask a question in such a long, drawn-out session. And I think I would love to, I would love to prevent us from, you know, or perhaps kick us off the, the queue and make us go to the back of the list, the end of the list to ask our second question if it exceeds five minutes, but I don't think we're there yet. At this point, it's simply to make a statement and/or ask a question within five minutes.
Counselor Farr.
Madam Chair, that is the only one question I had, and I think I delivered that and the answer within a two-minute time period. So, thank you.
Correct.
3:30? Are you timing over there, Connolly? Okay.
Excuse me. Through the chair. All done? Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
The operation of the, the committee is governed by the chair, and the chair has the ability to, to move the meeting efficiently along, and that was always the role of the chair, regardless of procedural bylaws. It didn't withhold, and I know I've certainly been a, I've been certainly at the other end of that in the context of the chair. So, and I don't begrudge the chair for exercising their duties and responsibilities. I'm not clear in how, in practical terms, I support the concept, I just don't know how in practical terms, is this system going to be, or is it already dynamic enough to capture that point, or we're back down to basically the discretion of the chair, which always existed? Can I ask that through the clerk?
To the mover of the motion?
Or to whomever.
To the clerk. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, did you hear the question? Is it not up to the chair regardless?
Through you, Ms., Madam Chair. Yes, it is actually up to the chair to determine.
Thank you. So, it's the exercise of the chair and the discretion of the chair, and because these processes or this system, I do not think will encapsulate the differential between preamble questions and/or comments, and I think it'll still be up to the chair to, to exercise their, he or her duty to run the meeting efficiently. I just want to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Eisenberger? Just give it a second, sorry. Isn't like my thumbprint this morning. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and music to my ears, actually, that we get back to. I think for, for a while there, we had a kind of a speaking system. Now, we have a newer system that, that actually limited it to five minutes, and then you had to extend. That's why the flashing light happens, in fact, that you would have to extend. So, the way I read this motion is that you have five minutes, and when the five minutes is up and you're not done, you can ask for a request of extension from council. It says council. And, and then you can have an additional time, time amount going forward. So, that's the intent of the motion, and I support that. I'm not so sure that the comments I've heard for the moment supports the same thing. So, you know what? We have, I believe, a responsibility to have efficiency, but there are some extenuating surface answers that happen once in a while that would allow for some additional time, and I think this allows that process to evolve. So, I think it's a good thing that we institute some discipline in this process. We tend to, on too many occasions, hear the same thing over and over and over again, and I think there ought to be some support to the chair to actually prevent that from happening, and that, that hasn't been the case in the past. So, you know, if we're going to go down this path, then we need to be committed to, you know, following the five-minute rule and, and then requesting an extension thereafter. I'm fully supportive of that, and if council's going to commit to that, that's good. That hasn't been the, that hasn't been the practice in the past, however, and we've tried to institute that before, and it hasn't been overly successful. So, I support the motion. I'll continue to support that, and we'll see where it goes. And, but we need to ensure that whoever's in the chair gets the support from council to, to enact, you know, the discipline that needs to happen, you know, when it comes to the rules about speaking and repeating oneself and going over the issue, you know, ad nauseam, as opposed to, you know, getting some focus, saying what we need to say, and moving on with the issue. So, fully supportive of this motion. I appreciate it.
And 10, two minutes. Good for you. Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I would say even before supporting a chair, I think it's important and incumbent on us to recognize that not everybody around the table understands the procedural bylaws, and it's apparent when we rotate the chair where we have situations where they're not adhered to. All I ask for is systems and principles in place that are adhered to consistently across our meetings, that provide a fairness in the way that we engage, because it often, you know, it, it kind of regresses to the Wild West. I've taken part in it as part of the culture here. And you'll recall that one of the motions I put forward to governance, which is still a floating motion, was to have members of this council at the beginning of a term elect a deputy mayor, a speaker's role, somebody who would be trained in the procedural bylaw, in Bruno's rules. Because this idea of rotating the deputy mayor's position, and I'm all for councilors going out to the community groups and helping to support the mayor out, public facing for the ceremonial duties, but I would say by and large, the consistency of the chairpersonship of these meetings is horrific. We use it as bully pulpits. We politicize it. You know, I've been in situations, and now it's rectified by this, where we're not even recognized on speaker's lists. So, I would say the first step is for us to have somebody come to this council and give us, and give us a full reappraisal or a full refresher course on our procedural bylaws, because we put a tremendous amount of political pressure on our clerks to have them referee the circus that is sometimes is our meetings. And I, and I think the other points that need to be acknowledged is we're not coming to these meetings prepared. There are people who ask questions that are already inherent in the reports. We've seen it. There are people who don't even listen to previous speakers, and they re-ask and restate the same question. It's a tremendous waste of time. So, for me, I think I would, I would prefer to have more discipline placed on my own, my own performance, where I know that I have to come in with questions either posed in advance to staff, written down in a way that is succinct and precise and doesn't float. And in doing that, I think we'll find that the, and I did a calculation, the amount of staff time, just in the front row, not even acknowledging the second row, knowing their salaries, knowing the amount of time that they wait when we go through this rigmarole, is just, it's not a sustainable way of, of government. And I would, I would prefer to have somebody in the chair who, who adheres to the principles of our procedural bylaws and is only, is first elected by us and then is only challenged by, by council, that allows them to be free of this political pressure of, well, what if next month, when that person's the chair, you know, they, they don't, they don't allow me just to go off? So those are the challenges. And I've had that reflection in myself in my own heated, you know, emotional debates and sometimes the, you know, the times where we all lack political maturity. But it's very frustrating for me. And so not only do I support this motion, I would support it with a strict five-minute cap that says you ask all your questions in five minutes with response. We ask our staff to be succinct. And if you don't get it in the five minutes, you go on to the second-time speakers. A lot of these questions could be asked offline. So if we're only doing it for media row to get a, you know, to get a news cycle, we need to rethink the way that we do, you know, our oversight and our governance here. So I support the motion in its strictest form. And I'll put myself to that discipline. I've been speaking for three minutes and 50 seconds. That's giving me ample time.
I'm watching.
Right? That's very clear. It's 100 words a minute with normal cadence. You can't say something, you know, in 500 words. It probably doesn't need to be said. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Jackson for first time. Counselor Conley for the second time. I also have myself on the list. And then we have a second-time speaker, Counselor Whitehead. So Counselor Vanderbeek, sorry. You're first up, then Counselor Jackson.
Thank you. I just asked, I'd like to ask a clarification, and it may have been answered. But I just want to make sure it's clear. So when asking a question, there's a response from staff. Does that five minutes include the response from staff? Or is it just while the councillor is speaking? And how are you going to keep track of that? Because there's no stop on, as far as I know, on the system that allows the chair, whoever they are, to know how long staff has spoken, to take it off of how long your time limit is on the screen.
There is a stopwatch on here, so just to let you know.
So if I stop speaking, you can put, you can put me on hold?
I have to get this on full screen, which I have yet to understand how. And Daryl's going, no.
No, I don't think so.
I apologize for interrupting. But when we did the training, there was a stopwatch at the bottom. So anyways, so Counselor, we'll sort that out later. Sorry, Daryl. Go ahead. Counselor Skelly, the question to you as the mover. How do we time it when staff are part of the five minutes?
Thank you. Through the chair, there is an opportunity to readjust our, or to have that kind of provision within this system. It is used, I was speaking to staff earlier. It is used in other municipalities with mixed reviews. I do think that this is really an attempt to just get us a little bit more disciplined. And perhaps that the spirit of this, that we should attempt this at least. And perhaps there is a little bit more on us either on the clerk, which we, I'm not suggesting, but perhaps mostly on the chair to use. I use my, whenever I have, you know, prior to this, I used my stop clock on the, my phone. And I think that we know when things start to get heated and people start to get long-winded. And I think that the emphasis is on the chair to monitor this, at least for now. And I think more than anything, this is about recognizing the spirit of this motion and, and, and...
Oops, sorry. Can you please request? I think their question was answered as well.
I will echo what Counselor Green said. It's to recognizing the costs of staff timing and even our people who attend in the gallery and how long they sit here waiting to be heard.
Thank you, Counselor Vanderbeek.
Thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
I won't be supporting this, Madam Deputy Mayor. This is going to be a logistical nightmare, and this will implode down the road. You'll be fraught with problems. Let's see. Counselor Vanderbeek just had the floor. She asked the mover of the motion. Is that part and parcel of her five minutes? We had earlier speakers that had very legitimate questions on an issue that took an extraordinary amount of time. But hopefully, we all benefited from some of the answers. And interspersed within those questions were comments on the questions and the answers received. I could just see the poor chair, from here on in, if this is approved, having to disseminate between questions of staff, questions of the mover of the motion, getting back on track for the actual five-minute speaking time. Folks, we hopefully are all respectful around this table. There's a lot more babbling that goes on at the legislature, at Queen's Park and in the House of Commons in Ottawa, than there is around this table. And I'm sorry, this chamber, this august chamber is one place where my constituents, through live streaming and/or through Cable 14 viewing, can hear the essence of the debates that are going on. A member of council mentions, well, ask questions ahead of time, come in prepared, do that behind the scenes. Well, sorry, I like to do this in an open session as much as possible. I respect passionate speeches around this table, Madam Deputy Mayor. I would never want to curtail that. So if the majority of my colleagues want to go for a five-minute rule and how you're going to exactly identify what is defined as that five minutes and what qualifies, but what's an exception, but then go for an extension of time, if you don't get the exception, will be a logistical nightmare. Just record me as opposed, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Conley.
Thank you. It's amazing, you know, everybody's talking about five minutes. And everybody has exceeded five minutes by 15, 20, 25, 30 minutes. And this, you know, lots of times, not the question, it's the comments before. The question that takes 20 minutes or 15 minutes. And I do agree that we do waste a lot of time. I can look back at today's and say, there's a few that were 20, 25 minutes. But I've exceeded it at times. Not that often, but I have exceeded it at times. And everybody does, because there's certain issues that you're passionate about and that you want to get across. I like the spirit of the motion. But I have to agree with Tom Jackson that to police it would be impossible. And what's going to happen is, everybody's going to say, give them another five minutes. Give them another five minutes. Nobody's going to deny somebody the opportunity to speak. So I don't think it's a practical one, even though it's, I can see the benefit of it. I think more than anything, we have to be respectful. We have to be respectful of the time of everybody. But we don't need a motion to say, oh, I can go to the bathroom for 30 seconds? Oh, I can take 10 minutes out for this? We don't need all that stuff. And that's all you're doing here, is you're restricting people. We are public servants, and we should be able to talk to the public. We're not wasting anybody's time up here. They get paid. They're here for their expertise. And I don't think we have people there that are just taking a holiday up there. They're all hard-working people. And I just don't think we can modify it to be fair. The other thing is, I agree with Mr. Green, or Counselor Green, I'm sorry, that we should have a deputy mayor. I think that's an excellent idea, to run the meetings, gets used to what's going on, knows how to do it. And there's a couple people here that I would recommend, and I'm not one of them. I would recommend in a minute to do it. And I think they do a great job. But I think the time to do that would be probably at the next, after the next election. The new council can decide that. So I've taken almost three minutes up. So should I talk for two more minutes so I can get my five minutes in here?
I'm setting you up right now.
Or just say no? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And certainly, great comments around the table. And I absolutely agree, and I do follow. You know, ask your questions ahead of time, read the reports. But we have to remember that we're all elected here, and we have an open and transparent, we push for an open and transparent government. And, you know, we've recently had, you know, this excellent system installed that gives us better microphones, better recording of the meetings. You know, our public are watching this. And they're watching because we're allowing more of these opportunities for them to sit and hear things going on. If we're just sitting here, move second, go, move second, go, like our council meetings, then residents go, so what happened? They have no idea. So you need, I mean, we need the opportunity to speak on reports, to maybe give some clarification, not because we're wanting repeat information, but the public don't know what's in that report or what we're talking about. See, you say item 8.1 today. Who knew what item 8.1 was? So I mean, there has to be some connection so the public understands what's happening. And, you know, we do get passionate around this table. And there are issues that you want to be sure. Because you know, at the end of the day, when you get in your ward and the residents go, well, geez, I never hear you say anything. Do you really look at the paperwork? Do you do anything in there? That's not the message that you want to send out there either. But we need to have efficiencies. I do not disagree with that. And I think, you know, our system in the past, where we had five minutes and it flashed, that was a great system, because we could see what's going on. Now you have the little clock in front of you. So we still have an idea what's going on. But to shut things down and say, you know, let's just do our work outside of here and come in and just vote on each item and just move second, move second, move second, I don't think that's fair to the public. And that doesn't convey the information as thoroughly as it should be. And with regards to staff, you know, I'd be the first to say, yes, I disagree. I certainly wholeheartedly believe that staff time is money. And we have to make sure it's used efficiently. But our staff that sit here with technology today, just because they're sitting here doesn't mean they're not doing work for their office. Because the technology allows, just as I have my laptop sitting here and I'm able to continue to do work from here. So my office is moving along. So that technology's there. And it's all there because we put all these things in place. So I'm well within my five minutes. And I'm not going to stretch it out. And I think as one of the councillors around the table, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but I've tried very diligently to be sure that I've always stayed under that five-minute rule. But there are times that we get passionate. There are issues. And we have to be sure we have the opportunity without completely constantly saying, okay, shut me down, let me come back later. You know what it's like when you have a train of thought. It's impossible to do that. So, I mean, I think what we need to do is respectful, be more respectful around the table. Certainly recognizes today, when questions were asked, I, you know, I'm third on the speakers list. Questions were asked that I was going to ask, I cross them off so that we're not asking things two and three times. But I'm certainly not in support of this today, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems like we're wasting a lot of time debating what it will take to not waste time. And I figure that if, at this point, I'd like to call the question, because my issue is this. I think symbolically, we all know that we support what's before us. But it's a little too arbitrary. And there are times when we all, at one point or another, require more than those five minutes. So under the system, it really wouldn't prevent anyone from being a 10-time speaker on any given issue. So it really, it doesn't really solve anything from a time perspective. So I'll call the question at this point.
Thank you. I still have one more first-time speaker on the list, sir. So I'm going to go to the first-time speaker. I also put myself on as a first-time speaker. Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the, calling the question because I was seeing the humor in the discussion that we were having to, the motion that is calling for the five-minute rule. I absolutely support the intent of the motion. I think it will be a nightmare to, for the logistics, to make it happen. I don't think we understand this system enough to be able to make that decision today. None of us really have enough training on the system to know how it will operate. And I think we could possibly just dissolve into even more of an embarrassing meeting situation. But yeah, be respectful, for heaven's sakes, people. You know, I've been here eight years, and we really need to up our game and just showing a little more respect and a little more professionalism around this table. And that goes for everybody. I put myself in that category as well. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to pass the chair over to Mayor Eisenberger. And I welcome Counselor Johnson back so you can come up here as soon as I finish speaking, because you're actually the deputy mayor. I really appreciate everyone's comments. I'm not one to prolong my preambles. I'm not one long to ask my questions in nauseam. But I will make a comment about the deputy mayor position. In the former municipalities, they did have a deputy mayor. But that's all they did, was be the deputy mayor. They were not a councillor and a deputy mayor at the same time. I can speak from experience for this past three months. I was deputy mayor in November. It takes up a lot of time away from your constituents because you're going to agenda reviews, you're going to pre-meetings. And then December, I was covering for Counselor Pasuta when he was off. And as you can see today, I've now done, this is my second meeting this month, for covering off the past two deputy mayors. It's not an easy job. I totally understand that. Maybe the suggestion should be whoever wants to volunteer for the next term, rather than those that are not comfortable doing it, then they can step aside. And then the rotation might be a little bit quicker, and it might get to the ones who are comfortable in this position. Having said that, that's my comments on who does the chair. This is not an easy job. You're trying, it's like corralling cats. Anybody with an early childhood background, which I do, it's, I can tell you, two-year-olds, and I've handled 30 of them at circle time, is a heck of a lot easier sometimes. So those are my comments right now. I actually love the intent of this. I really do. It's really hard as a chair to say to somebody, that question was answered and asked, let's move on. And then you get the rebuttal coming back. But I wasn't here, or I wasn't paying attention, or I had an important meeting just to go to. So it is difficult to do. It's not an easy job. You do your best up here to make sure that everybody stays on focus. And I think I do that at the best of times. But again, you have people who walk out of the room, then they go on for 45 minutes and walk back out the room, and then come back in and re-ask the questions all over again. It is very frustrating when you're sitting here listening. So I totally understand the intent of this five minutes. In fact, I think I would like to support it just to test it for the next, for the rest of this council. We can always change it at the next council and see how difficult it will to achieve. So that's my comments for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take the chair back.
Shows that you've spoken for 27 minutes and 15 seconds on my council hearing.
It did, too. You're right. Okay, second-time speaker. Oh, sorry. The question was called, the mayor clerk is, mayor clerk, Madam Clerk is correcting my procedurals. So the question was called. It has been moved and seconded. Counselor Skelly, you moved it. Who seconded it? Counselor Green? All those in favor standing recorded? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Again, procedural. Counselor Marula has called the question. Is there a seconder for calling the question? Counselor Conley? Hang on, hang on.
Since the call of the question was not voted on,
Since the call of the question was not voted on, then you still have a speaker list that you have to go through.
My understanding...
Well, you call the question, you need to have the vote on the call of the question at the point of time of calling the question.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. What I would recommend, you go through the first-time speakers list first.
We did.
And then the motion can be put on the chair to call the question. Councillor Whitehead, it is up to the chair, this is a recommendation, not direction, I'm just simply recommending that it should be after, most motions are put after first-time speakers.
And I did say that.
So if the motion is to be put on the floor now, it can be moved and seconded. If it's not, it is up to the chair and committee if they don't want to carry it.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I did say that I have to go through first-time speakers, and I will come back to councillor Marula for the call of the question.
So here's the problem.
Thank you.
So you have a point of order, and the point of order is, procedurally, you cannot put the, because procedurally, you have to go and exhaust the first-time speakers. At that point, you can move to call the question. The problem procedurally in this circumstance is the motion was never placed at the end of the first-time speakers, and therefore, you have to wait for a speaker to come forward to move that motion at that time, so you have to exhaust the list that's currently there regardless.
If I may, Madam Clerk, I did point out to councillor Marula, I would come back to him, he did speak of it, he was putting the motion forward, I wanted to do the first-time speakers list, we have exhausted first-time speakers list, I'm now following through on what I promised, I'm coming back to councillor Marula.
Through you, Madam Chair, I will stand by my advice. The decision is yours.
Thank you.
I stand by my advice, thank you.
Thank you. So, going to councillor Marula, seconded by councillor Collins, to call the question. All those in favor for start, thank you, any opposed? Thank you. So, the question is before us, the motion is on the table, standing recorded vote, I heard, all those in favor. So we have councillor Aiden Johnson, councillor Farr, councillor Green, councillor Skelly, councillor Johnson, Brenda, councillor, Mayor Eisenberger, councillor Vanderbeek, councillor Ferguson. All those opposed. We have councillor Marula, councillor Collins, councillor Jackson, councillor Whitehead, councillor Partridge, councillor Pearson, councillor Conley. Madam Clerk, the tally, please. What's the vote?
That passes eight to seven.
Thank you. So, we're now on to, is there any other notices or motion? Seeing none, and I'm just going to go right to private and confidential when we go in camera, you're taking over. General information, other business. Is there any other general information and other business? Seeing none. Private and confidential, may I please have a motion to approve, December 6th, both sets of the December 18th, excuse me, I'm speaking, December 18th, 2017, closed session minutes as presented. All those in favor? Thank you. May I please have a motion to move into closed session, respecting items 8.13, sorry? Can I finish this, or do you want to, okay. 12.4, 12.5, and 12.6 pursuant to section 8.1 subsection C, D, and E of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300, and section 2392 subsection C, D, and E of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matters pertain to the proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for city purposes, labour relations, or employee negotiations, and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before the administrative tribunals affecting the city. Could I now, oh, sorry, you're asking a question, then I'll ask the public to leave the room. Go ahead, councillor...
This is on first.
Oh, sorry. Can you put your request back in, please? Councillor Collins.
I did want to speak under other business, and I had pushed it earlier, so if you want to entertain the question now, it's to staff, I can wait till after the in-camera session, procedurally, I'm in your hands.
That's up to you.
Well, we were short-changed the other day at Public Works to ask questions at the end, because we were running into public health, and I did have an issue related to snow removal, so I can hold off until the end of the meeting, and we can come back to that, as long as there's staff here to answer that.
I think that's going to be a fulsome discussion, in my own opinion, given my own complaints, so if you don't mind, we'll put that on at the end. Thank you. So, could I now, oh, sorry, councillor, Mayor Eisenberg.
So, a quick question. I know there's a collection of electra people here that are dealing with an electra motion, and I, you know, there's an army of them sitting in the other room there, are they dealing with it, are we dealing with that today, or are they, and when are we?
Through you, Madam Chair. The agenda for today, GIC, once we finish GIC, we're going to have the HSR board meeting, followed by the HSR shareholder meeting, both are very, very short, and then we will move into the HUC shareholder meeting.
Okay, all right.
And just for clarification, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the mover... We're not there yet. The minute, may I please have, oh, for the minutes. Councillor Aiden Johnson, and we'll pick councillor Conley, how's that? Sorry. All those in favor for the minutes. Okay, so I need a motion, please, to go into closed session. Councillor Ferguson, and I have councillor Pearson with a question.
Question, thank you, Madam Chair, and my question was just that, oh, direction, I just want to be sure if there's any way the clerk or councillor Collins can try and get the staff in here for his question with regards to snow removal, so that it can be an efficient discussion.
Thank you, that's a good suggestion. Okay, so can I please have a motion to go into closed session? I've got councillor Pearson, councillor Farr, all those in favor. Could I now ask the public and any staff who are not required to be in this closed session meeting, please exit the chambers, taking all your personal belongings with you. Members of the public will be invited to hear any further deliberations upon committee reconvening in open session indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of white noise. The committee will, in the event that they're in closed session for more than 30 minutes, wait up to five minutes upon reconvening in open session before proceeding with the meeting, to provide members of the public and media time to return to the meeting room. Thank you.
Was that carried with quorum in the room?
Yes.
As well, we were directed to get staff into the room to speak to the snow removal question. We won't be doing that until after we reconvene in open session, because that's a public matter. Thank you.[812.56]
Mover and seconder requested for the following. The report HUR 18001, respecting Greater Hamilton Volunteer Firefighters Association interest arbitration award outcome be received, and B, that same report, respecting Greater Hamilton Volunteer Firefighters Association interest arbitration award outcome remain confidential. Councillor Partridge and councillor Pearson, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Oh, my goodness. So, I go back to 813. Flip, flip, flip. 813. Which regards Affordable Housing Site Selection Committee. Now, for the right language here, the clerk is providing. Hi.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The amendments that need to be put on the floor are to subsections A, after the, on this third sentence down, after the word housing, we're going to add the word net of capital commitments. The same thing will be for, bear with me here, my apologies, will be for B, and that will be the last sentence, after the word time, we'll read net of capital commitments. And then subsection E, at the very last word of the paragraph, after the word housing, net of other capital commitments. So, I just need a motion.
So, councillor Johnson can move this, seconded by councillor Pearson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Carried.
Great. Tell me it's not adjournment. No. I'm flipping back to my...
Councillor Johnson?
Pardon me, clerk, please. Motion on, sorry, oh, on 8.13 as amended.
8.13 as amended, yes.
8.13 as amended, moved by Johnson, seconded by Conley. All in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Now, is it adjournment?
No, now it's 11.1 to councillor Collins.
Oh, pardon me, your handwriting is here to guide me. 11.1, go to councillor Collins for general information, re-snow removal. Councillor Collins, here we go. Handwriting will never fail me, particularly when it's Stephanie's. Councillor Collins?
Thank you, it was well worth the wait. It's been about six hours, but that's okay. I just have two things that I wanted to raise. One is the whole issue of snow fences, and I had attempted to bring this up at Public Works, but Public Works bled into, and led into, public health, and so I didn't get the opportunity at that point in time to ask, but staff have taken it upon themselves in many areas across the city, not just in my ward, to do away with snow fences, where communities, neighborhood associations, individual residents historically have requested these amenities, and it has helped, obviously, with preventing snow from drifting onto sidewalks and roadways. And so, in November and December, I had reached out to staff for three or four locations in my area to be told that, in fact, we were going to monitor these areas, which are traditional hotspots, and that there'd be a higher level and a better frequency of snow removal activity from our crews and contracted crews to assist, to ensure that they're not causing inconvenience for people who are using the roadway or sidewalks. I have certainly responded to my constituents, many of whom were involved with the original request for these, at these locations, and certainly, it's been met with some unpleasantry in terms of, you know, in many cases, it took a long time to get these fences up, and these actions have been undertaken probably with the best of intentions, but without communication to individual ward councillors. So, I'm, I'm concerned that this has occurred, and I would like to ask, and I did follow up certainly with staff, and they've provided me with this information, and I did follow up and monitored over the holidays because we did have several snowfalls, and many of these locations received the same level of snow removal service as all the adjacent streets, and so I did not see a higher priority given to one or all of these locations. I certainly did have to follow up with staff to say that, you know, the field, the sidewalk adjacent to this field has drifted on, the snow has drifted on the sidewalk. Staff responded, but that was the whole reason why, in many instances, these fences went up, because we didn't have to play this cat and mouse game of, could somebody visit, how long's it going to take, and the snow fences in many instances resolved that problem. So, that's the first issue, and I didn't have a chance, I apologize for bringing it up here today. It's really not the form, should have been done at Public Works, but I didn't have the opportunity, and knowing that we have probably several months left of snowfalls, and it's, it's not the most opportune time of the year right now to install fences at these locations, I would like to know from staff, and from Dan, and I think Dan for coming back, as to, you know, I would like a plan, and an update, an information report that seeks to address this situation. In many instances, at least in my area, and I can't speak for everyone else, I would like to see those fences back up. They're, they're very small cost, and I think they've, they've worked quite well over the years. And in fact, I'm not getting requests to remove them, I'm getting requests from different neighborhoods to install more where there's a need. So, that, that's my first issue, and I'm not certain whether Dan wants to address it. I certainly understand it, that it's kind of news to him today. I didn't have the opportunity to give him the heads-up. The other issue is the snow plow app, and of course, I think it was covered in The Spectator. You know, I was dealing with Brian Shinnall on this issue years ago, and committee and council gave full support for that, and I understand that our staff have a lot of work and, and a lot of things on their plate, but it's been several years, and I think committee and council has been more than patient with the direction that was given in terms of implementing something. When I first raised this, there were very few examples across the country in terms of where municipalities were using online applications to advertise and to inform the community in terms of where contracted and/or city plows were operating, in what neighborhoods, along what timelines, what routes, and now we've reached a point, as was pointed out in the article, where almost everyone around us has some form of an information application that they either have through mobile devices or through your home computer at home that you can access. And so, where at one time it looked like we might be leaders in this area, we're now falling behind, and I want a definitive date. I would just like staff to say that, you know, to give this some priority, understanding it hasn't been given that in the past. I certainly don't want to lay criticism at any one individual. Again, I know that when the snow arrives, you know, our first priority is to get it off the road, but, you know, this is the type of stuff that's done in the off-season, through the spring, through fall months, when, you know, when there is some free time to, to address these issues, and I don't think it's been given a priority internally, and I would like for Dan to come back to the next Public Works meeting with a firm date that says, by this date, we will have something not just available for the community to use, but something that's going to work. And so, I certainly share the concern in terms of that, you know, we want, when we release something, we want to make sure that it's, it's working properly and that there's some value to the community, but having said that, I think we've given three or four years now, and I know that prior to me putting the motion, it was talked about at committee, and there was support, and then I formally came forward because there was some delays, and anyway, I'm, I'm not going to go through the history of where it's been to committee and at what times, but needless to say that it, it's been a topic of discussion for many years, and I think now's the time for us to get a firm date from staff to understand when it's going to be live and for the community to use.
Mr. McKinnon?
Those are the two issues I wanted to raise this afternoon.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with this snow fence issue, but if there's not a reply back to the councillor tonight, there will be tomorrow, and we'll certainly make sure that we put a plan in place to resolve that issue. With respect to the, where's my plow, there's a number of factors that influence that, but at the end of the day, it's not ready yet, and that's, I'm as disappointed as councillor Collins is in that, so I will definitely bring back a report to identify the, a firm date when that's going to be implemented.
Thank you. Councillor Collins?
And thank you, councillor Collins, for bringing this issue. I believe I brought it up about three years ago, in the rural areas, that the snow fencing had disappeared. When I brought that issue forward, they were, the staff's response was, well, it's private property, and it's too cumbersome, and I can tell you, on January the 7th, on a Sunday, I followed three different snow plows on three different rural roads, and if the further behind I became from that snow plow, the drifting was coming in front of me. There wasn't a snowflake in the sky, but the wind was excessive. So, when you're looking at Ridge Road, you're looking at Airport Road, and Trinity, and Fletcher, and all these roads are leading from development to work, and on their way from home from work to, to their homes, and I'm telling you, it, these are unlit rural roads, so it's not in the middle of the city where you can see the snow plow or see the snow drift. All of a sudden, it's just upon you. So, I would really appreciate also getting a response back for about the snow plowing, especially in the rural areas. We've had multiple accidents on Nebo and Miles. We had a school bus turnover. So, this is, this is, to me, is a safety issue, and if there's any way I can help implement that, especially in my ward, please don't hesitate to let me know. I can help you get in touch with the landowners. Let's get the snow fencing up. We had one landowner, I believe councillor Collins was questioning how many trees he had along his, his field, and the response was, it helps with the snow drifting, and actually, the 11th concession was actually in better shape than any of the other concessions because of the farmer putting up these, these fir trees from one end of his property to the other. It was 40 acres, and he must have put up about 30 trees. Some of them were city trees, and the question was, how come he got so many city trees? Let me tell you, it becomes a cost-effective way. So, our snow plows are not constantly going up and down roads, and then they don't have time to do the rest of the roads because we simply don't have the manpower. So, Mr. McKinnon, I'm, I'm looking forward to that response as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I really appreciate councillor Collins raising this and the previous speaker's comments as well. You know, the, the idea of planting the trees, and I hope that, I hope that is included in the report, just, you know, the, the opportunity to use trees and what effect it would have, because out in the rural areas, as councillor Johnson said, you know, we, we've got Mill Grove Side Road, Siddeham Road, Centre Road, Highway 52, 6th Concession, various other concessions. I was driving them, and I could not believe how bad some of these roads were, and it's, you know, in many cases, it's the winds, but the combination of the winds and the snowfall, it's, it's darn treacherous. And, you know, there's been snow plows down those roads. I've seen them, and then I've come down the road, and, you know, the, the one half of the lane is, is completely covered in snow, and it's hard to, it's hard to maneuver that, you know, and I know the winds are legendary in Flamborough and out in the other rural areas, but we have to do something about it because it really is dangerous. So, I certainly appreciate you raising it. I just want to confirm, though, is this coming back to Public Works? Because I'm not on Public Works. I would appreciate if it would come back to GIC, because I think, you know, it certainly seems to be an issue broader citywide, so if I could, Madam, Madam Clerk, just give that as direction. If you need a motion, I'll do one, but if it can come back to GIC, I really think everybody would benefit from hearing about the options, hearing about costs, hearing about other challenges or benefits would be good for everyone to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, we went through the governance committee, and, you know, it is now 5 o'clock. This is a GIC meeting, and you want, yet to take a Public Works issue and pile it on to a GIC meeting. I would suggest, for those councillors that want to be part of this discussion, they're welcome. Councillor Pearson shows up at a regular basis to committees that she doesn't necessarily sit on, and nothing prevents anyone to attend a discussion if it's formally identified or notified by council, or sure, by staff, that that discussion's taking place. But, I mean, this is our GIC today, and, you know, if I, if I had a, really, it is a Public Works issue, and trying to bump it off to GIC, I don't, just, it's a slippery slope, and I think we need to be somewhat consistent with the governance committee's recommendations. So, I'm not going to speak to the fencing, because I think it's been eloquently spoke to. It does concern me on the, the bullet that the former speaker addressed in regards to the app and the snow plows, and supplement to that, I was told that by January, we would have the, where's your bus app kind of thing in play. It is January. I haven't seen any reports. So, while you're digging in to find out what the status is of the, where the snow plow is app, can I get an update where our HSR app is?
Well, I permitted it for snow, and I will permit it for buses. Would staff like to respond, or are they not equipped at the moment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can include that in the report back about the snow, if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, well, it falls under the Public Works, but like I said, people have been waiting for this. I know that there's many people that, as, as our director's doing a great job improving the processes, and it's been a bit of a bumpy ride, but I appreciate that, that she's doing everything she can. I, I think that the residents, and I know that I'm getting this from students, they want to know when they go to a bus station that, where their bus is, and whether it's going to arrive on time, and most of them have smartphones, and yet, in many cities, they have this in play, and in Hamilton, we don't. We made a commitment, we would have it, I thought we were going to have it over a year ago. So, I'm trying to understand, when I was told January, and now we're in January, and it still hasn't been launched, what the timeframe is. So, if you have that answered now, that'd be great, so that we can actually broadcast. If you don't, I would look forward to having a, a report by council.
Thank you very much. We, so my name is there for reasons I don't understand, but I will go to councillor Jackson, and hopefully not screw up the computer. Councillor Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just don't want to leave councillor Collins and Partridge out there on their own. I know my office had put in a request in November, I believe, for an additional new location for a snow fence, and mid-management levels' response, basically, I'm paraphrasing, was that not necessary, extra cost, but what we'll do is, we'll ensure that our snow crews and plows will monitor that particular park a little more closely, and I thought, boy, trying to make that commitment, given the number of snowfalls we've already had, the below-freezing temperatures we've had consistently, I thought that's even putting a greater onerous task upon the snow crews to kind of put special attention there, when I thought for a measly negligible amount of money, an extra snow fence along that corridor, that park, would have just solved the problem and made the residents who live across the road much more happier and less impacted by snowdrift. So, General Manager McKinnon, I just want to let you know that I support councillor Partridge and Collins, and they're not alone in terms of a request that was denied in the past, and I'll leave that with you. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. That exhausts my list, and I believe it's adjournment time, and we go on to our next meetings. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Oh, Madam, oh, yes, councillor Pearson, please go ahead if you want to click your button. Oh, motion to adjourn, rather. Good. Seconded by councillor Conley. All in favor?
Carried.
Carried. So, we are adjourned. We are moving right into our next meeting. Does there need to be a lull of some kind, or can we just plunge?
I don't want anybody to move. I need one minute.
One minute, and Madam Clerk, I believe I need a script, unless it's here, and I, oh, your chair, good. Great.